Good morning. Being it is 9:30 on Tuesday, May 24th, we are going to call the workshop session to order of the Clickcat County Board of County Commissioners. We are going to begin with a department update from our Public Health Director, Erin Quinn.
Sorry, this is not a department update. I was asked to come speak just a little bit about mental health services in the county, and I think it was framed as what it would look like to provide mental health services within the Health Department and what other counties were doing. So approximately half the counties in Washington State are providing, they have a combination kind of Health and Human Services Departments.
Did you break it down on size of county? I mean, we know the big ones are going to have mental health. How many of the little ones?
I will forward you an email that has that. So it's in a map format. I'm not sure that the map's 100% accurate. I considered printing it and chose not to because I wasn't totally sold on, I hadn't fact-checked it, so I didn't share it. But I was, about half of them, it's a lot of the, it's not all of the bigger counties. There's a pretty good spread. It's most of the western counties, so even the coastal ones, the smaller Greys Harbor, Skamania, Walla Walla, Adams County is one of the ones that has, that's kind of a comparable county that has both. Funding typically, from the best I could tell, is typically comes down from the healthcare authority provides funding. Most of the clinics will also do reimbursement, right? So they're credentialed providers, they bill insurance, they get the reimbursement. And that's, and that's how Skamania County is actually running theirs. They do through the reimbursement. They don't get any general fund dollars, I was told yesterday, to cover any of those services within their departments. So currently in Clickcat County, just for your awareness, before we have a conversation this afternoon, KVH has four behavioral health providers, two substance use disorder providers. Skyline has a behavioral health provider. North Shore has three FTEs of behavioral health providers. And there's quite a few private providers in the area as well, but most that I was able to find didn't take insurance and were cash basis only. So.
Is there, is that because, any particular reason why they didn't take insurance?
I didn't ask them. I can make assumptions based on what we know about insurance reimbursement. Yeah. So if you, if you, we looked up yesterday, if you wanted to go in, like I'm a new client, I want to be diagnosed, I need a diagnosis physical, I guess for lack of better terminology. From Medicaid, I'll get about $99 for that. And we're looking at an appointment that I would assume would probably be at least an hour worth of a provider's time to do that. So, I mean, clearly, the funding isn't, it's not, you know, that's cost prohibitive for your overhead. So, something that wouldn't be done without further other grant funding or other reimbursements.
So does Skyline and North Shore, do they take insurance? Or is it just the private providers that aren't taking?
They, all of the KVH, Skyline, and North Shore, as far as I know, they all take insurances. The private provider ones that I just, I just did a sample quick yesterday. I pulled a couple of different ones up to kind of see what was in the county, and none of the ones I pulled did accept insurance. They will provide you a bill to give to your insurance, but they won't actually do the insurance billing for you.
I would imagine that's for the same reason as some of the dentists choose to do so, just because the Medicaid and Medicare doesn't pay enough and
Correct.
they don't want to be riddled with too many of those patients.
Yeah. I, yeah, I am certain. I feel, you know, just as a health department, I think our role in this situation is really supporting the systems that are already in place, and that we should continue to partner and educate and refer as needed. But clearly, the services need bolstered, so looking at how to do that differently. There's a lot of work that's happening right now. The SWATCH, the K-Link group, is doing a lot of work around mental health. They're doing an assessment right now that's going to help them catalog all the services that are available in the community in one kind of spot, so that will just kind of help ease some familiarity and probably identify some need, gaps in access. And they're really looking at just kind of what traditional, so, you know, just the behavioral health providers are available. They're gonna, they're reaching out to all the businesses to see which businesses provide employee assistance program, EAP programs, because they really want, rather than waiting until people get to the need where they need to be seen in an emergency room or in a behavioral health clinic, they want to kind of meet people ahead of that time and get them services before they get to a crisis level. They're also providing, they have funding to, to teach the Mental Health First Aid training in the county. So they're working on training the trainers right now, so getting instructors that can start providing those courses in the community so that people can be trained to, you know, respond in a crisis. One of their grants will actually train most of our staff, will pay for the training of most of our staff to have the Mental Health First Aid as well.
So, then reading between the lines, I'm taking it that you think now that the hospitals are providing something, it's your recommendation to support them as opposed to redoing what they're doing in another department?
I think so. I think there's opportunities for us to maybe bolster what we are offering. We are doing the peer, the peer group with the perinatal mental health, so for pregnant or postpartum women and families, so you got to help bridge that gap. We do a lot of mental health assessments through our family planning programs and our WIP programs, and it's fairly often that one of our clients will be walked by one of my staff to the mental health office. So really, we're pretty invested in having access, whether in the future, maybe we have some opportunities to offer a telehealth for the clients that we are seeing. I think that would be terrible. But if you wanted to look at opening a clinic specifically, we're looking at, frankly, a lot of money, which potentially could be prohibitive. I think there's grants that we could, you know, do that. There's a lot of logistical considerations, and I would say a rough estimate would be that it would be a minimum of a two-year stand-up. So it's not going to be something that we could immediately fix, but I think there's a lot of other things we can focus our time and money on to get to the point where we're providing services that meet people before they're getting to crisis level.
And then crisis level is a whole nother problem.
Yeah, so.
Beds in the state and whatnot is a whole nother issue.
Yeah. So there's, both hospitals got me some very rough estimates on their six yesterday. So they're approximately 1,200 people were seen in their, in their respective ERs for behavioral health-related diagnoses in the last, in 2021, actually. So.
1,200 people.
Yeah, combined.
All right, 1,200 people over the course of a year between 22,000 people. So that's 1,200 times, not 1,200 individual patients? 1,200 total?
That's 1,200 total, and I don't, they, they did the quickest data poll they could for me, so I can't tell you if that's duplicated or unduplicated. There are, but.
Because it sure isn't 5% of the population, so, which is what 1,200 people would be.
But you have to consider too, right? Not everyone uses this ER. Not everyone goes to the ER. Not everyone, some people present to provider office, some people present to hospitals in other areas. So that would be probably an underrepresentation. And it's likely that's a number that's unduplicated, that's duplicated.
Now, with what, say, the hospitals are doing, do the hospitals have a want to do the crisis type, or are they referring to stay away from the crisis type?
So there is a dynamic that I don't know that I understand, and I tried to dig into it and wasn't able to find. So there, someone, I don't know who, assigns a crisis response team to our county. So there's, I think Comprehensive is our identified DCR, so Designated Crisis Responders. I don't know who assigns those, and I don't know whose authority it is that does that. So one of the things, when I spoke with Skamania County, is they do have some DCRs, and they felt like they'd been pretty successful, but they cannot leave the county limits. So if they have a patient in Skamania County who goes to Skyline, which is fairly common, it's kind of how that goes, they can't go with that individual. And then the DCR in that Skyline, from my understanding, occasionally or regularly comes from Goldenville. And so there's definitely some delays where there's available in Skamania County, they're not authorized to cross into our county.
Is that due to their funding, or is that due to a decision on their commissioner's part, like?
They're not, they're not the authorized DCR for the county, so they, my understanding is I don't think they can't practice here, but I don't know, I don't know who the, I don't know who the authority is to get them to the point where they could cross that county line, and if it's a matter of us. Mm-hmm, yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure what the politics are of that. I'm not sure the process of that. I did a little bit of reading, but wasn't able to establish what the rest of the rationale there is. Skamania did share that they're receiving a lot of requests for appointments through their mental health clinic at their county from Clickcat County residents, because they felt like they couldn't get into Comprehensive in a reasonable amount of time. I think that that is, I haven't verified with other clinics across the river, but I expect that that there is, that burden is starting to spill over into other areas where we can't get people in here in our own county.
Any idea what Skamania is doing, or if they're having trouble finding beds or whatnot, like we are up here? Are they getting them out of Vancouver? Are they having a shortage? Any idea?
I'm assuming that they have the same bed shortage that we do, because they're, as far as I know, when you have, when they have a crisis and they call for beds, that they're calling all of the same hospitals. It's a bed shortage statewide, as far as I know. It's not about who necessarily calls, it's just a lack of beds.
Okay, so one of the questions today is to ask Comprehensive about, you know, the DCRs from Skamania County being able to come to Skyline to follow their patients, and is that something they'd be okay with, because they can't provide the service apparently? Or they're having a hard time providing the services?
My understanding is that they have challenges providing the services.
Yes.
Or that there's a delay in time in providing the services. Occasionally, I believe they use a Walla Walla contract for DCRs, and I've had.
But again, that's, that's only telehealth, correct?
Correct. And I understand that that's not been received well by providers or patients. Based on feedback I've been given.
So KVH has four, and Skyline has one, and North Shore has three. So both sides of the county pretty much have four behavioral health providers. And at least Skyline's behavioral health provider is doing ride-alongs with, and, and do we know, are they just going on like ride-alongs, or do we know, like in White Salmon, are they actually, like, they pick up the behavioral health provider and take them to individuals' houses that they need to have?
That I don't know, but I am certain I can find out by this afternoon.
I mean, I saw it happening. I saw the behavioral health person with their vest on going on a ride-along, and I was like, I want one house, or if they're just riding around?
I expect they do both, but I'll, I will verify that with chief this afternoon.
So I guess the next question is, are hospitals able to provide their own DCRs? So those four behavioral, or three behavioral health specialists, like at KVH, if no one from Comprehensive is available, can they provide the service as well, or is it, they're not allowed to?
I don't know. The document's a couple hundred pages. I only made it through like 50, so.
Yeah.
And then when it comes to Comprehensive, so if we have a bunch of behavioral health providers in the county that are private, and they're choosing to not work for Comprehensive, is there a way that we can push Comprehensive into contracting out until they hire people? Is that an option that we see as, as a question to ask them?
So when I read, so they're funded through the healthcare authority who contracts with Beacon, who subcontracts with Comprehensive. And the contracts that I reviewed yesterday, which were not the ones for Beacon, but the, it would be a sister contract, they have to have specific permission from the healthcare authority to do any subcontracting, from what I understood. So that might be messier than it seems, but that would be wonderful if they could do that. They were given, Beacon gave $1.5 million to quite a few agencies. Comprehensive was one of them last year to help recruit and retain individuals. So one of the questions I'd like to know is kind of how they've been able to utilize that funding to help with their recruitment process?
One of the questions I'd like to ask is, can I have the phone number to, to last, I don't know, five years' worth of employees that have quit? Because I'd like to hear from them. But good luck with that. So that's what I think the problem is.
I think they're in the community.
Yep. And I, that's just that I'm hearing in the community, that it's not the favorite, if that's your game, and you want to be in the healthcare, the mental health industry, go work at hospital, go work here, go work privately, don't work for Comprehensive. I think it's an employment issue. And that's what I'm trying to find a workaround on.
Well, I think ultimately, like, our taxpayer dollars are paying for their services. We, Clickcat County, part of our tax revenues goes to Comprehensive mental.
Oh, they're getting paid, no doubt.
Yes.
It's just a matter of whether they're providing.
They need to be able to serve our residents, and they need to provide the services. Ultimately, if they don't have the answers, then I would imagine that one, or that Beacon would need to come have a conversation as well.
If they're not, it's one thing if they're under contract and they're not providing the services, so Beacon is withholding the funding. It's a different thing if they're still getting the funding, even though they're not living up to what they're supposed to be doing under the contract.
Well, I mean, right here in their annual report, it's showing, for our area, Comprehensive has 41 vacancy, and it impacts 2,050 community members.
Well, yes. I mean, we, we have a position available in the county that has nothing to do with mental health, and the person applying is fully trained in mental health. It's like career change, or, you know, can't find a decent company to work for in the county, so you're willing to do a career change, or?
And it shows here that the clients in Clickcat County were 698 over a population of 22,000.
So that, so they have two offices. They have an office in White Salmon, and they have an office in Goldenville. That's approximately seven patients per week in each office, but if you divide it all out.
Each office. Yeah, 365 divided by.
As I said, I think our biggest problem is, I mean, when, when push comes to shove, it's getting the, the mental health responders, but it's also the bed issue, and we will never fix the bed issue. It's a state.
Um, I, you know, we could also ask, I've heard a rumor, I don't have any substantiating documents to back it up, but I've heard that there was funding for a facility here, and that the money was given back to the state. So I'd certainly like to know if that was true or not.
The money was given to Comprehensive?
Yeah.
For a facility?
That's what I've been told, but I don't have, I mean, that's just rumor and conjecture, so I don't know. But if that's true, I'd like to have that explained as well.
Do you have ideas or recommendations on how to have this sit down with them this afternoon? Do you want to just be called on, or should this be a, throw up a table and have a roundtable discussion with everybody, or just call on you when you raise your hand?
Um, I, I think I'd just like to kind of hear what they have to say. I have a lot of questions. I could certainly put it in a Word document, just so that you have some awareness of kind of the information that I'd like to see, just based on the report we've had, and just questions that I've gotten from, when I talk to the hospitals and clinics, and kind of see what their concerns were as well, and bring that information to the table. So I'm happy to share that with you all as a, as a quick Word document.
I would print an extra one for them, too, because I'm going to guess that they won't be able to answer half of them, and they'll have to get back to us. So if you print them a copy, then they know what questions they need to get back to us on.
I will rephrase some of these questions, and. I, I think that it's important to just allow them to give kind of their presentations. I think it should be mostly focused on them. It should be information. Most of these questions, I'm hoping they'll answer within the context of their presentation, and then just ask questions, maybe when they're done. I don't.
Okay. Yeah, I figured we would.
I, I think one of the things I would really, one of the things I'm most interested in finding how much funding is actually allocated through their programs for residents of this county.
Yeah. I want to, I want to know how much they spent to, to see 670 patients.
Yeah. And I would also like to know how the, you know, we give them the tax funding, and I'd like to know how that's utilized.
So I guess it'll be an interesting conversation, from what you've heard. Are you at all interested in us standing up something like Skamania County has, or do we think that our hospitals are likely going to be the best set for this?
I, I don't know, and that's kind of why I wanted her to give her presentation before they did, so we can get a little bit of background information.
I think the other.
I don't necessarily, I mean, if we're going to do something, I don't necessarily want to just offer the exact same things that the hospitals are offering, because I think what's happening now is there's gaps in their tracks. There are some people that are missing the system or falling out of the system because they don't qualify, they don't have the right insurance, they don't, or something of that nature. They need a bed, they need, and so if we're going to try to eventually, and I'm not saying now, if we're going to eventually try to take something on, whether it's this or childcare or whatever, we have to fill the cracks that are out there and covered. I don't want to just do something that competes with the hospital, and the cracks are still there. Because I, I don't know, I'm a firm believer that the private government can do things way better than, or private businesses can do things way better than government. Government is the reason we have this problem, as far as I'm concerned. So I don't want to try to reinvent that wheel. I don't know.
You were saying, Director Quinn?
One of the things that other counties have is a Behavioral Health Advisory Committee specific to their county, to look at those gaps and what it looks like, and to hold their providers accountable. I am, I don't know if there is a Clickcat County one. Skamania and Clark both have them. That might be a question to ask. It's me, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Oh, I was going to say, is there a squirrel in the room?
Nope, that's me.
No, that's, that's not a terrible idea, if you can get volunteers interested in spending the time and research and.
I mean, that might be the best way to find your cracks and gaps.
Yeah, but are the volunteers going to do that, or are, is she sitting on that board, and the board says, hey, Erin, go find those cracks?
I think then, like. Part of the work is being done right now. So SWATCH has got, and I, I asked their permission first to throw them under the bus, but I, I think it would be worthwhile for them to give a presentation to you. They're, they're collecting a lot of this data right now, and they plan on having that all put together in a report in the next six months. And once that's completed, I think it would be very valuable for you to hear what they've found.
Very telling.
Wow, six months. Bern, good morning. I see your hands up. Were you just raising?
No, I'm here, I'm here. Hi.
Join the Behavioral Health Committee?
Morning, Bern.
Yes. I'm Bern Harple from Lyle. Hey, thanks for letting me just join the conversation. I am so happy at what you're doing. Thanks so much for being coming involved. My interest in, you guys have heard me be excited about lots of different things, but behavioral health is something that is just part of why I live. My background, as you know, has been a family practice doc, but almost all that has been involved with some sort of behavioral health. The last few years of my life, I was involved as the medical director for the Norclark County Jail, and interacted with the community health providers on the other side of the river. I was also part of their advisory, of the advisory board that oversaw the, um, community mental health folks there. I have done lots of research and have been very directly involved. And I was also a county commissioner, a hospital commissioner for Skyline for many years, and continued to bother them about why don't they get more involved with community health. And so just a couple things, I just want to, first of all, just offer myself as one of the advisors, if we can be on, if I, if there, if there becomes an advisory board. And I just want to encourage you guys to be amazed at the unbelievably unique resource you have in this county. The two hospitals you have in this county are public county hospitals that are uniquely involved, like Dan says, it's partly private for-profit and partly government-supported. You cannot have a comprehensive mental health care system unless you have the hospitals involved, the schools involved, the jail involved. And the hospitals are just so uniquely involved, required to be in, and should be involved with administering this. When I was the Skyline Director, I kept getting, your insurance questions are really good, and the answer is, on, in its own, insurance just pays horribly, and no hospitals in the gorge will even consider doing a mental health care bed, because insurance pays so little. But if you have one of these community health contracts, then you get a huge subsidy to offset the low insurance. And the hospitals do this all the time with Medicare, Medicaid, and the hospitals are both losing propositions, but then they can deduct it, so that's how they stay county hospitals. They're obliged to provide care to indigent folks who can't pay. It's, and almost all folks with mental health issues, you know, don't have insurance. They're usually what we're called dual diagnosis. They have, you know, drug addiction and mental health, and sometimes it's impossible to separate the two. I could literally go on for hours, but I think your ideas of maybe getting the hospitals involved are really important. And then when you talk with these folks on this afternoon, I'll be watching. I wish I could have a little ear bug in, ear bud in your ears. I was very much involved with overseeing the mental health folks in, in the Dows and Hood River, and they are just experts at deflecting, and the second you show any sort of upset or anger, they'll hit you with all these mental health lingo things of, well, I'm sorry you feel that way, and here, you know, that kind of stuff. So I'm trying to be really, really direct. And one of the things I was talking with Erin about is, all of the folks that get public funds have to meet some sort of performance metric. And so I would really, really push you to push them on what are their scores, and how do they compare to other counties. SWATCH must have this information somewhere. And if you had an advisory board, they would review this every quarter, and we would know time to, time, time from the diagnosis to outpatient visit, how, the number of hospital visits that you said there was 1,200. Comprehensive mental health should absolutely know who the repeaters are, because that's one of their failures. If there's recidivism, and the same person goes in 10 times, then why did that happen? What was their response? If they only have one or two, there are many, many different performance metrics that other mental health communities providers have, and I'm not sure why they're not providing that. And lastly, lastly, I'll just shut up, but, um, their, their little blurb that they're going to present to, the couple pie charts, are, as you can just see, are, are just not very helpful at all. It just kind of shows we were here and we did some stuff, but how effective it was. Is there any sort of patient satisfaction or stakeholder satisfaction survey? That's critical. What do the jails think of your mental health care providers? What do the hospitals think? What do your doctors think? What do your school systems think? There's just, please hold their There's just, please hold their feet to the fire on how the, how effective they are. And anyway, thanks for letting me talk, and I promise I would be helpful to Erin if you let me be on the advisory board, if you so appoint one. Thanks.
Thanks for, um, so it sounds like your opinion is there wouldn't be a shortage of volunteers like yourself if we chose to set up an advisory board on this?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I, I can second that, a bit of pressure by other individuals as well.
Well, then I think it's a heck of an idea.
All right, it is ten o'clock. Uh, is there any final closing remarks, or we're gonna let Vern finish it off?
Nope, Vern did a great job of summing it all up.
Thank you, Vern.
Thanks, Erin, for your update.
Thank you, Director Quinn. All right, we're gonna move on to Public Works Director, County Engineer Gordy Kelsey.
Morning.
Good morning, sir. When does Jeff come back?
Three more weeks.
He's out? Okay.
He turn on medical or something?
Surgery or something?
We have a few items on your, actually one on your consent agenda and one payment approval. So the small works contract that we opened bids for last week for the guard rail repair, that's on your agenda to award to Frank Gurney, Inc. To do that work, they were the low bidder. Uh, we have one pay approval, pay estimate for Courtney Road to James Dean Construction, the amount of six hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seven cents. And more, more to come.
So, in my packet, I saw there were two separate numbers for, um, the, uh, the Gurney, um, contract. And one of them had, uh, really low rates for the, um, flagging, and then one of them had really high rates for the flagging. What was that about?
Um, so, between the different bidders?
Um, I don't know if it was between the bidders, or it was, I mean, it was the difference between the huge amount of differences. I'm trying to find it, and now it's not coming up.
You're talking traffic control?
Yeah, it was under the traffic control, it was-
So one of them is two grand?
And one of them was like ten. There we go. Frank Gurney.
Might be looking at the old engineer's estimate?
Yeah, oh, it was two engineers' estimates, yeah, so there was one engineer's, engineer's estimate that was pretty close, and then one of them, it was
Yeah, so the original one, I think, used, uh, WashDOT numbers for high, there was a high estimate, but it didn't really, it wasn't, uh, how we do the work and how contractors do our work, but the one that has, oh, it is in there.
Yeah, yeah, cause there was one of them that has, the engineer's estimate at ten thousand, seven hundred-
It'd only been one, and it's the-
The second page?
The second page.
Okay.
That should not have been in there. That's an old, an old, uh, old numbers that were not, uh, representative of flagging in our county. But they're WashDOT numbers, so they do lump sum for traffic control.
Okay.
And it's just cost more on a state highway with the volume of traffic than what we, the setups that we're allowed and able to have on our low-volume roads.
So that was still per one, cause I thought the ten, cause each one of them said ten, seven, I thought that might have been, like, for the whole thing, the estimate of traffic control.
No, no.
Each one, ten thousand, seven hundred?
That, so when WashDOT does it, their costs are much higher than ours, so.
So we have to estimate it at that, knowing that the people that are gonna put in the bids are not gonna come in at that?
No, that's, that's, you can dispose of that first estimate. The second estimate is correct, I don't know how the, that other one got in there.
Why it was even in there, okay, I was just sitting there and I was like, I don't understand this.
I see, I see what you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, so they, their bid prices are much higher. Apologize that that got in there.
It's trying to confuse us and keep us on our toes.
Just checking to see if we-
See if we're reading all your documents.
Guys, we're looking through the packet. Good job, thank you. All right, so, we'll move on. So yeah, that's, the lower amount is correct, and so we were kind of in the middle of the, of the range between the bidders, um, with our engineer's estimate. Uh, let's see, grant-funded signs and guideposts, so the contractor, um, is finishing the sign installations on Canyon Road. That's their last road, so they have a week or so left to go, and then they'll be done. Roosevelt grade paving, they still have punch list items that need to be corrected, and they have not started any of those. I'll let Seth talk about Courtney Road, so we attached a couple of photos to the back of your packet.
Yeah, so the contractor's continuing, yeah, excavating and building the, uh, bankments, installing culverts. But one of the interesting things happening right now is the construction of the, the, uh, anchored mesh wall. So we did include some pictures here. On the first page is kind of the first course, and when the first row is installed, and the second page, you can see they've gotten a little further, not quite at full height yet.
Is that a fiber or metal?
It's, it's metal over a fiber mat. So we had a little bit of a design challenge in this area. There's a house, let's see, one of these pictures kinda show, yeah, the, the the first picture at the top, you can kinda see the house through the trees there. In this area, we had a really narrow road to begin with, and to fit our, our standard width road in there, we had to decide how are we gonna do this without affecting or displacing the house up above? And, uh, we had a few options, one was, you know, we could purchase the house and relocate the landowner, which is not really what we wanna do. Um, we could build a larger wall, a concrete wall, which takes up a lot more space to excavate and install it. There's larger impacts, and of course, it costs a lot more, so the, the solution we came up with was an anchored mesh wall. And, uh, one of the benefits to that is we can build it from the top down. You excavate a little bit, insert a few soil nails, attach the mesh, when that's installed, you can excavate further, cause as you're building it down, the ground up above is, um, secured and stable, and you can keep building as you, as you excavate the roadway.
Where exactly is that at? On the, is it in the upper section, or?
Yeah, it's towards the top.
Okay.
It's like right above where, um, Atwood Road is right below it.
Okay.
So we didn't have the option of building on the lower end of the slope, cause you got Atwood down there, and, uh, yeah, and then this also will help at the end. It'll blend better than a concrete wall, because we can actually plant vegetation in there, and it'll grow through that mesh.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to see the house through the trees, but it's right at the top of the slope.
He's got an airplane picture.
He's got a great view of the gorge and the mountain.
It has the mesh in there and the house sitting behind it, and, yeah.
And, and that was one of the things the landowner asked, is he wanted to have a tree screen between the road and his house. So he's got a yard that is, uh, maybe twenty feet wide in front of his house, we were able to avoid the yard and leave him a screen of those oak trees, so.
Yeah, all oak trees.
He doesn't see the, see the road right there in front of him.
No, that's true.
Yeah.
All right, design work?
Oh, so on the design side, so we met last week down in Clickittat, we had our open house, not really a large turnout, but, um-
How many people showed up?
Don't ask.
Count on one hand.
Yeah, me, Dave, uh, Lori, um, was that Clint? What's, what's the, Carl, Carl.
From the store.
Um, and, yeah, that was it.
So you had one, one person from the county?
Lori's a member.
Well, she's awesome.
Any Temple, Temple's there too.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Retired now, so.
I didn't realize he had lived down there, but anyway, yeah.
Yeah, and he came as well?
He came as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so there were a couple-
A great turnout.
Yeah, yeah. So we're coordinating with our crew to come up with a date for paving, and then we'll advertise for Small Works Concrete sub to come in and do the sidewalk portion of those.
Are you gonna do that path in concrete or blacktop?
Asphalt, except for the connections where we go to the road, and we've got the ADA, we gotta, um, an ADA ramp on the other side of one forty-two, and then on either end, there'll be a, the truncated domes with the concrete for a landing. We gotta build those out of concrete.
Right.
Everything else will be in asphalt. Courthouse parking lots, we're finalizing our plans for the three lots back here. Uh, we'll do an internal review, and then we're hoping to be out to add for contractor the first part of next month. Uh, we're also working with our road crews over here for Annex One to get that parking lot built. Small Works is on the agenda. We submitted some applications for our bridge on call. We've got three different projects we submitted for, um, two bundled projects. I think there's five bridges each for bearing replacements and deck seals, and one bridge replacement.
When should we find out on that, where we rank?
September, I think.
Yeah, it's fall, early fall, yeah, usually.
They'll come out and actually inspect the projects and then score them, and then we should hear about September, October, to let us know.
Yeah, which would be good. I can't remember what the dollar amount is, but it's, oh, I can't remember, I'll tell my-
Yeah, it's quite a
It's quite a bit of work.
Yeah.
That would be all funded by the federal government for bridges, so, which is good. Um, maintenance side, um, Golden Dale East, they're still finishing up the removal of material, so they've been, the building's almost gone, but they're also excavating and pulling, uh, there's, was kind of a hump in the lot where the building and parking sat. And so when we're finished, we'll straight-grade it toward the, uh, the alley, which has an inverted gutter, basically in the middle of the alley. And then that's how it'll all drain out, the lot will. So they're kinda doing that as they go, prepping for, uh, paving eventually. So, and hopefully, um, our crews will be able to do all that prep work, and maybe even the paving as well, which will save us some money. Especially if we can, uh, the plant will sell us asphalt that's sitting in Riley's Quarry.
How long is the plant gonna be there? Do we know? Are we gonna time run out? Are they gonna be out of there by the time we're ready, or?
Hopefully not. That's why they're continuing to do work over here on the lot, to kinda get it prepped and ready.
And I keep getting asked, when are the bricks gonna be available?
The-
The bricks from the building?
Oh, um, well, we can probably put them outside the fence, uh, if we wanna just open it up, we could do that as soon as today. There's just a stack sitting inside the fenced area, so we can pull them out and put them on the portion of the sidewalk by carvers.
I have one person that's really wants a couple of bricks, I'm sure you've heard from them too. Uh, so I was gonna go through the fence and snag a few, I just didn't see any yesterday, so.
Yeah, they're kinda tucked away. If you tell me how many you want, I can pull them and bring them over.
Make sure this gentleman gets two.
Okay, the glass blocks or the brick bricks?
I think the brick bricks, that's what he asked for.
Okay, sure.
So-
I'll grab a couple and bring them back.
Everybody else can patiently wait, this gentleman's in a little bit of a hurry.
Okay. All right, I'll grab a couple. All right, they're also, the east end crews also, uh, um, crack sealing on East Road, and then they start this week to clean up after the rally on the weekend, on Saturday. So I think there's a lot less work to do, because it's a little drier than it was in November when they ran last time. So last time, they, they exceeded their deposit and ended up having to pay more, and they weren't real excited about that, having another race in, in, uh, November. But we warned them that it would probably tear up the roads a little more, they're softer. Uh, west end crews are patching, they have a lot of patching, I, I, I heard they might have three, another three weeks or so of patching. And then, uh, they're also grading, so they were down one grader for about six weeks, we were waiting for parts. Just can't get parts for things anymore, so, um, equipment is down longer. The new building, ever, you might have noticed the parking lot got paved, which is really nice. And most of the fencing has been removed, and they'll, they'll come back, and there's still some dirt work to kinda blend our ground in with the curbs and sidewalks they poured. So that'll happen this week, and our landscapers will come in next week and tidy things up, and work on their punch list items, and then we're pretty close to being done with the contract, which will be nice.
When should the lines be painted?
When?
The lines be painted on it?
Uh, Thursday, this Thursday, so should be either Friday or Monday when we're opened up. But as soon as they remove the cones, people will probably start parking there. Excuse me. Uh, let's see, um, the blinds were installed in, and are operable in this room and the room below us. So there's both a five, or three percent shade and then a blackout shade, so you can roll either one down. Yeah, I, I still have to, we have to label the buttons, there's, um, basically an all the way down, all the way up, and then there's buttons in between, which is a quarter of the way down, half the way down, three quarters, so, options. So HVAC units, the ones on the courthouse, we still have the curbs that we have to remove from the old units. And the roofers will come this week to, to make that happen. And dispatch sound ins- insulation, uh, that work continues, it's kinda slow going to keep dispatchers working and, uh, do the work we need to do. It's kinda slow.
Good.
Good. And then when it rains, we'll know if it worked, right? Yeah, I'm sure it will help. Yeah, it does help. Okay, um, so we had two events this past weekend, the Oregon Trail Rally and the Friends of the Fair Barrel Race. And, uh, they went well, I think the barrel race, the ground was still a little wet. We usually don't have this much rain late in the season, and, uh, the grandstand's roof just drains right down on that south end of the, um, arena. So it's, it can be wet, and it was. Uh, this coming weekend on Saturday, there's a Memorial Hill Climb event at the Maryhill Loops Road. And they'll be staging on our portion of Loops Road. Vending Machine Survey, so we sent out a survey, um, to see what people were interested in as far as beverages and snacks. And I'm convinced that, uh, will make some people happy and others not as happy, but that's just the way it is.
I'd say you probably made them angry by asking, because then if they didn't get their specialty item, they're, uh, the one person's definitely not getting their item.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But, uh-
And then we, there were a lot of, it was kinda interesting, cause there was another column basically about, uh, medic, medications, you know, aspirin and those kinds of things, but, uh, I don't think we'll stock those, but fortunate, we have a pharmacy that's right next door to our building, so it's close. And then just to follow up on, uh, Big Buck Creek Road, no work was performed by county crews.
Glad they were mistaken.
So it could have been Skamania or a private. That's it.
Any questions? Commissioner?
No.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Director King, uh, you just here to support these guys in the work they're doing up, over there? All right. Have, uh, have you noticed any change with how much they've done in the sound in the room?
Wouldn't, then you would say, at this point, there's, there's plastic paint in the roof all around it. That's making plenty of noise. We don't really know until it's fully, uh-
No, that's a-
Sorry, we're passing around the vending machine list. Sorry, we're passing around the vending machine list.
Oh, yeah, I mean. That's a lot of stuff. Yeah. All right, come on forward, you two. We're a little ahead of schedule.
Yes.
All right, next up, we have our Economic Development, uh Natural Resources Director David Kluwer for a department update.
Good morning. I have a guest this morning, Eric Steinle, Ride Development. Is he on the line? Given we're starting a little early, we may have jumped the guy.
We'll watch for him to show up.
Okay, so then maybe we'll start out with natural resources. And Whitney, start out with an update on the well monitoring program, water supply slash drought and the lead entity program.
Okay, so yeah, starting off with well monitoring, we wrapped up our spring well check efforts earlier in May. Um in total, I looked at eighty-five wells across the county from Trout Lake all the way out to Bickleton. Um in general, we saw recharge over the winter, which is good. You know, we had a fair amount of precipitation this spring, so it's good to see the wells come up in response. Um in general, we're still coming off of several drought years, so our our wells are lower than they have been in the past. But you know, we did see recharge over the winter.
I have a, I guess I'd say a technical question because you would know. When you get into our soil and our basalt and our whatnot, when do they figure for our region? How lo, how many years does it take for the rain to hit the dirt to be in the well?
It depends, depends on the well.
Ballpark number for me?
I'll defer to.
Now, I I would say if you're in Swale Valley, it's it's that year because it goes up and down like a, like a bathtub, yeah.
Or Trout Lake or Houston.
But once you get down into the deeper basals, you know, some of that water's been in there and moved for a while, so.
We have, we have.
If I'm four hundred feet, I'm four hundred years.
Yeah, it's a much longer lag for the deeper wells.
That could be ten thousand year old water. That's when that water went down in there, but that's not how long it takes new water to get down there. It's just nobody's ever used it, so it's sitting at the bottom of the bowl.
Yummy, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in general, the shallower wells, we see them respond much more actively to precipitation each year. But the deeper wells tend to not exhibit that same pattern.
And our, and our really good wells between spring and fall will usually drop three feet. That's about how much decline you'll see.
Okay.
And we do have some wells out in the far eastern end of the county that are are drawing fairly old water and and uh they've been declining, what, several feet a year for a couple decades now, so.
That's the far, far east end of the.
Okay, good knowledge to have.
Yep, and then we have three wells that we're, we continue to track that are continuing a downward march, three of our domestic wells. So we have one in High Prairie, one out in Bickleton, and then one up of of off of Thompson Road. Um we have been able to to get, add two additional wells off of Thompson Road to add to our network. I'm actually going out there later this afternoon to get a first measurement on those. Um so it'll start to give us more information for that area, whether this this decline is isolated to that specific well or if it's a broader pattern. Um with, when you just have one well, it's hard to get a lot of information.
How much further down Thompson is it?
Um not far, only like a quarter mile. So I know there's a lot of other development that's gone on way further down Thompson. So we'll keep reaching out, but it's been slow to get new volunteers.
And I just, you know, even though it's only a quarter mile, need to take a look and see if there are any faults in between the other well. You know, they, there may be a barrier, groundwater flow barrier.
It would be great, it'd be great to get one in that development that's further along to you, that's another half mile down or whatever.
Okay, yeah, I did an initial outreach, but I'll do another one. You never know.
I don't know why people wouldn't just jump to sign up for that so you can actively know every year what your well's looking like. That that's, I don't know why they wouldn't just jump at signing up.
Well, we we have a very good response on that when we ask, but there are people that get nervous about having the government come in to measure their water.
You do look scary when you're.
Yeah, so we'll continue to do outreach, try to get some additional wells, but getting two, at least for this year, is is a help, so.
Yeah, and we stay away, my my department stays away from any enforcement stuff, so that we can maintain that trust.
Um moving on generally to water supply, as you guys know, we've had a wet spring, which has been very welcome. Um and that's really helped ameliorate some of our drought conditions here locally. So it's been a dynamic spring, each each month, we're getting a different story. Um but generally are now our snowpack uh and our snowwater equivalent is well above average for this time of year. And the drought conditions under the US Drought Monitor have also improved. So although we've had a wet spring, we still aren't out of drought conditions. Um right now, the the central and eastern portions of the county are still characterized as un, as abnormally dry or under moderate drought. So we're coming off a year's of drought, so it's gonna take us a little while to get out of those conditions. Right now, we're still under the Emergency Drought Declaration that Ecology issued last year. That expires, I believe, at the end of the month. And they're they're currently um telling us that we will likely be included under a drought advisory in June when they issue their new order. So an advisory is informational only, it doesn't come with any supportive funding um or anything else. It's mainly just a heads up for our area that drought conditions may continue to develop again over the summer. But generally, the um the precipitation this spring was very welcome for a lot of folks. Moving on into the salmon world for our Lead Entity Grant Round, um the grant round is progressing well. Uh we held virtual site tours with our State Review Panel earlier this month. And we'll be holding our ranking meetings with our Technical and Citizens Review Committee in June. On June tenth for the Technical Committee and June sixteenth for the Citizens Review Committee. Additionally, for the Citizens Review Committee, we have issued a recruitment notice for two environmental seats on the committee. One term is expiring and the other is vacant. So that application period will be open through June twenty-second and we'll have appointments before you in July, likely. I have had quite a bit of interest in these positions already with people calling and emailing. So I expect um, I expect we'll have more applicants than seats. So we will have a decision to make as to who to appoint to the committee. That's all I have.
And uh as you're aware, the Gorge Commission recently released a climate action plan for the scenic area. Whitney's background includes uh climate, a lot of work in climate resilience, so I've asked her to take a look at that. I don't know that we'll submit comments, but we might. And those comments are due July five.
Having reviewed some of that, I think some comments may be necessary, but we can talk.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys can come up with those, don't let me write the comments.
Okay, and I think I mentioned it last meeting, that the Swizzler Water Storage Project we've been working on since twenty-seven, actually even before that, is is back into a a more reinvigorated state. Ecology is more fully engaged now than previously. They had other priorities and COVID and that sort of thing. So we're the, uh we are co-leads under CIPA with Ecology and Benton County. And we're now meeting twice a month to make sure we're making progress, working on some of the additional technical studies that flowed out of the uh public comments during CIPA scoping. Uh we expect to have some onsite meetings with the landowners uh this summer and are inviting uh tribes to meeting onsite as well. So I'll keep you posted when those dates come up in case you're interested in going in and seeing the project. Um we're planning on releasing a draft EIS this year and try to finalize it by the end of June next year. That's, that's our goal anyway, so yeah, so it's, it'd be nice to get that that taken care of. So that's what I had for natural resources at this point, unless you've got questions. Have we got Eric on the line yet?
There's no Eric.
Okay. Okay.
Eric with Ride Development. That's probably who called and they hung up on.
Yeah. We've got a, yeah.
There's too many tech options now, you can be called, zoomed.
No.
Might have to put him on your phone on speaker, who knows?
Yeah. Just be joining. Okay.
Look at that.
So Eric, you, can you join us? Uh Eric, uh you guys are familiar with the project, but maybe some of the audience aren't. He does have a slide deck uh to provide a brief overview of what's going on there.
Pretty sure.
I thought it might be helpful for everybody. Eric, can you do your slide deck?
Sure, good morning. There's a lot of, a lot of faces on here. Apologies for being a minute or so late. Let me go ahead and share my screen if it will, uh let me share here. Um it's here, can people see that all right?
Nope.
How about now?
Nope, oh, just saw something. Oh.
Okay. That's weird, it says I'm sharing um right now.
All we see is your face, sir.
Okay, well, maybe I'll turn my camera off, maybe that'll make a difference, I don't think.
Now I see your name.
Let me try um.
There we go.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, well, do the same thing enough, it'll work, right? Uh apologies. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to provide an an update on the Golden Dale Energy Storage Project. Uh if there's questions, uh my colleague, uh Michael Rooney is also on today as well, I believe. And so happy to answer any questions that you have. You know, I think many people are aware of the project, uh so I'll spend just a little bit of time talking about that and what the technology is. Um the project itself is being developed by the company I work for and my colleague Michael, a company called Ride Development. We're currently the largest developer of low-impact certifiable hydro power in the United States. And this is one of the types of projects that that we develop. The owner of the project is Copenhagen Infrastructure Partners. Uh they are a Denmark-based fund focused entirely on renewable energy development, uh including large-scale storage here in the United States. Um so I think the other thing that's important to point out here as well is that this project has been uh the vision of a number of people in Clickitack County for quite some time. Um as you know, a major storage component of a larger portion of renewable energy uh that's been proposed for a considerable amount of time. In fact, I mean, it goes without saying, Clickitack County has been a leader in renewable energy development, construction and operation uh well ahead of most of the rest of of the United States. So the project itself sits entirely on lands associated with the former aluminum smelter. Um NSC owns the lands associated with both the upper and lower reservoir itself. And uh the associated access roads are already constructed to it. Um and this project, um when when completed, would be able to generate or provide twelve hundred megawatts of clean renewable electricity uh to the grid. So I'll talk a little bit about, you know, what that actually means and how how it works. I think everyone is probably familiar with the the former aluminum smelter site. This is just another map that provides some of those those physical, physical features here on the on the landscape. Um just to give you again, a little bit of orientation and size and scale. The the two blue dots that you see, one above and one below, those are the largest physical components that would be visible when the project's constructed. And these are sealed reservoirs, they're lined, um so it's a one-time fill of water to the system. And then we're just essentially moving water back and forth based on the the uh the demands of the grid. There's no release to the Columbia, it's a closed system or essentially closed loop pump storage. So from a scale perspective, I think it's important to point out, those those ponds are the biggest features. There's sixty acres uh in size. So when we talk about, you know, the amount of actual storage and power this provides to the grid and two sixty-acre ponds, it's a pretty stark difference if we're talking about a similar scale for wind, which would, you know, require seven thousand plus acres in Washington State or solar, which would require fifty thousand acres in size. So it's incredible um amount of of storage and capability on the renewable side for the grid in a very small area. The project itself ties into the existing John Day substation. Uh and we, we, the project's transmission ties into an open circuit on the Bonneville Transmission. So we're not having to uh permit a new cross through across the Columbia River. Uh just real briefly on the project timeline and then can get into some some questions and and comments. We started this process or the permitting process, which includes a very comprehensive federal permitting process um that is uh, excuse me, that is managed by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission or FERC. And then there's a very comprehensive state process as well, um that's managed by the Washington Department of Ecology. Those two processes, uh they they do generally work in parallel with some exceptions. And we began both efforts uh in twenty eighteen. Uh where we are at currently, we're we're just past the three-quarter mark phase of the permitting process. Uh the state of Washington will be issuing their draft environmental impact statement for the project on June second. Um and I'll include some dates here on the next slide. And FERC earlier this uh winter issued their notice that the project is now ready for environmental analysis or essentially that the commission is now beginning their um their NEPA process or EA or EIS process to make a decision on issuance of a fifty-year construction and operational license for the project. So the permitting phase of this project should really end uh in twenty twenty-three, which would move us into the final design and construction period. The project itself, you know, it takes four to five years to construct. Um and so we're targeting a late twenty twenty COD date. Um and that ties in with the actual large amounts of carbon-free capacity uh that utilities in Washington and Oregon are forecasting that they need. And this project fits in, fits in nicely from that perspective. Uh so I mentioned uh one of the big next steps in the project, Washington Department of Ecology's issuance of the draft environmental impact statement. There will be a sixty-day comment on that. And there's an ability to participate and make comments, uh part of the record for individuals that are interested. We would encourage uh people that have been following this project to come out and show their support uh when Ecology uh holds the the public meeting on June twenty-eighth. And it'll be uh at the Grange uh in Goldendale, uh and it'll be from six to six to eight PM. And I've also included Ecology's website uh as well. You can see updates that they have on the project in addition to our own project website. And there's also information on that website on how to provide written comments, uh if you're not available to show up uh in person. So I think that uh that's the end of the the slides. It's had a short deck to kind of walk through uh a few items on the project. Uh but with that, I would I would turn it back over and I am more than happy to to answer any questions about the permitting process or or anything else about the project.
Eric, you mentioned uh the amount of water it would take to fill the project, that's a one-time fill.
Yeah.
But there will be a, and that's a what, three hundred acre feet annually to replenish evaporative loss of water?
That's correct. Yeah. The engineers, um, have forecasted that we'll need somewhere around 300 to 400 acre feet of water per year, um, to, to offset for evaporation in the closed system. That's correct. Yeah. So just to give you a sense of comparison, and, and many of you may know this, but, uh, you know, the, the project, once operable, will essentially use, the consumptive use of water from the project will be in that 300 to 400 acre feet range. So historically, the, um, the aluminum smelter onsite, I, I believe the annual use was somewhere around 7,000 to 8,000 acre feet of water per year. The project used there onsite. So we're using a, you know, considerably smaller amount of water, um, for a new, uh, new commercial project. And revitalizing part of the former aluminum site.
Right. And, and Clickatack PUD has the water right from the former aluminum smelter. So it's an existing water right. It serves their cliff's water system. So it's a municipal water right. You're going to be basically a customer of that municipal system. So they'll fill it and, and, and that water will, the PUD will have other customers hopefully in the, in the future for, for that water right. And put it, put it to use. Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. Um, we are purchasing water. We've, we've entered into an agreement with the district to purchase water from them for the, for the project, uh, just like any other commercial customer. That's right.
Eric, this is Commissioner Christopher. Can you give me a, um, I know you mentioned it, but what, um, best forecast when you're going to actually start construction if all goes well?
We'd like to begin construction in 2025. 2026 would be our goal, uh, for the project. Again, you know, we're not entirely in charge of that timeline, given that we need the permits in hand before we can better forecast, uh, that. But that, you know, we started this process, um, in, in 2018. I know it seems a little crazy to begin a process in 2018 for a project that, you know, won't be commercially available for a decade plus later. But, um, we started the project then, uh, based on the demands that were forecasted for this type of energy storage, uh, in Washington State, right around that timeframe. So late 2020s on through the 2030s is when utilities will really not, really begin to need large amounts of energy storage from projects like this.
Eric, this is Commissioner Anderson. Um, I'm looking at your, um, recommendations for terms and conditions that the agencies have put in. Um, are you seeing anything in those recommendations that are full stop that would stop this project? Or do you see everything as being mitigated?
So, um, the, the comments and, and can, and potential concerns that have been raised, um, by the resource agencies thus far, we have responded to all of those comments, at least based on our applications. I'm certain that there'll be others, but thus far the comments that we've received and, and suggestions from resource agencies, um, are fully mitigable. Yes. But again, you know, we're still, we still have not seen the, you know, the comprehensive environmental documents and still have a little bit more work to do. But yes, um, and, and part of that is just the nature of the site. For me, certainly it's the first, um, you know, large new infrastructure project that I've worked on where we're not building in a greenfield site. I mean, a hundred percent of the site has been developed. Uh, certainly it's the only project I've worked on where all the access roads are currently constructed. Um, and, you know, um, you know, the lower site itself, we're contributing $10 million to part of the, the cleanup effort. But, you know, the site is, 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 is well-developed. So, um, to at least some extent, that precludes, uh, the project from having a lot of the, uh, or at least some of the, um, the permitting hurdles that you run into with greenfield development. Now that said, uh, you know, the lower site, um, you know, does have to go through a special process because of, um, the historical use by the aluminum smelter. But so far we've been working through that process with Ecology and the, and we've been sticking to a timeline, both parties.
Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions other than just to say I will see you on June 28th, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thanks. That, that's the lion's share of what I had for the economic development component. Richard's still in training. Expect him back week after next.
Have we heard any updates on, um, the EDA grant, um, down there at the airport?
Not since, I haven't heard anything since Richard. I, I believe Public Works is working on the cultural resource survey. Yeah, Jeff.
You have any questions economic development wise?
Uh, no.
Uh, SBDC, where are we at, um, with Ms. Lowell on, um, finding childcare, someone that's interested in?
She held a Zoom meeting, was not well-attended locally.
Okay.
We just got folks from around the state dialed in. It was disappointing. I think she's working with, uh, I think she has one client now that she's working with in, uh, the childcare arena. And were we going to schedule a workshop is?
Okay.
Cause she's taking a look at, at this facility and, you know, what, you know, what that, that might take.
What it'll take.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. It's hard to make them pencil.
Always. Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we have, Krista's going to be here at 11:00. Um, do you have anything for board pending?
Oh, yes and no, but, um.
Thank you.
I don't have to, I'll hold mine. I, I have, uh, historical society paintings in the hallway, that kind of information. But I'll wait for Mr. Soder to be here to give a full, cause I need a board guidance on where we go from here. So.
Okay. Um, let's see. Do I have on my list? We, uh, I just heard this morning, we were able to get the grant for the 195 million in for the Hood River Bridge. That is submitted.
Submitted right now.
All those documents and everything. If you would like a copy, it's.
It's in my email. I read it this morning.
Okay.
She's on it.
And then there's also all the appendices, if you would like that as well. But that's a lot of information.
That's more information than.
I kind of figured. Um, I, I can say, and we might talk about it later, I met with Charter Communications. So they provide, um, they are, uh, in White Salmon, Dalzport, um, around Lisle. They have, uh, they provide broadband as well as cable. It's what it is. It's fiber-backed. It's coax cable. And they are interested in applying to serve around 680 homes in Clickatack County. That would go from where they currently serve out into the community. And, um, they're interested in applying for Washington State grant dollars to do that. They'll bring their own dollars as well.
Or just extend their current lines out a smidge more?
No. What it is, is their current lines will stay what it is. What's hooked up to coax cable will stay that. But everywhere they want to go, it'll be fiber to the home.
Okay. They give you any idea on, I mean, is that to serve, you said 600 more homes? Is that across the county or is that mainly in one section?
So it's going from, cause they've got to go from where they currently have fiber. They don't have any fiber out near Goldendale. That's served by HTC or somebody else. So what it is, is it would go up Snowden, um, a ways. And then it would also go, uh, up towards High Prairie, um, and up towards Appleton and a little ways up the 141 corridor.
So they're going to use some of this.
State dollars.
State grant money plus using their own grant match.
And their own grant match. And, but we need to be, um, first of all, they would need our support, um, because we will be the applicant, um, is the way it works for the state. And then, but we wouldn't be on the line for any, like, if they don't build it, we're not on the line to build it.
Right.
And then.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, it's, it seems like a win-win for us and our citizenry that are, you know, located nearby. But it, it kind of makes me wonder if we should be reaching out to some of our other CenturyLink, you know, what have you, um, to say, hey, why aren't you doing this? But not that that's our business, but.
A lot of this is gonna, a lot of this is going to be an overbuild of CenturyLink's lines. Um, and the reason and rationale is, is that it, on the CenturyLink got paid with the CAF $2 to build all these, you know, fiber-fed DSL lines that they can, cannot provide the service to meet the new definitions of broadband. And so this would be a, uh, to-the-home fiber that they, that can always be expanded. And we sat down and we looked at like the areas and all the points and the different houses. And, and my, my thought was give us the best, get the most amount of houses you can for the least amount of cost per, per passing.
Per user.
Because you could, you could build a line out, you know, three miles that might cost you $300,000. Well, do we want to do that or that person is three miles away? Should they just go on Starlink? Because a lot of the Clickatack County is also on Starlink. And in Starlink's getting money for every person they hook up within Clickatack County. And it looks, what did I work, the number was for every person that they hook up, I think Starlink can get like almost $18,000. It's their portion. And so, so, which is about, you know, for running fiber to the home, you're pretty close to the same amount. In some areas, you're looking at $30,000 per passing.
Say, I don't, I don't know that the average citizen knows that their internet is subsidized so heavily.
But a lot of that, I mean, that's not going into the individual. That's going into all those satellites.
Right, right. Or into the fiber optic line running out of the dirt. So.
Well, and so they figure, they figure it'll be 80% overhead, 20% buried. But so if you say you, you're going to look at probably about a $5 million grant to hit 600 homes. So you're looking right about the same amount, somewhere $15,000, $16,000 per house.
No, I'm, I'm game as long as we're not taxpayer. Um, I wouldn't say taxpayer, but.
It is all taxpayer.
I was gonna say, I won't say taxpayer, but I'll say county, uh, funding or subsidizing the grant. I'm sure they're going to want sign-off and letter of supports and.
They want all that.
Our name on the dotted line and, um, and then, yeah, my only concern would be, um, legal counsel determination of the contract to make sure we're not.
We're not on that.
Right. If they have to build something and walk away.
But I mean, this is, so we've tried for years to work with WAVE, to work with CenturyLink, to work with these other groups to put forward applications to support them. Um, most people, when CenturyLink was getting the CAF dollars, they're like, we can't afford to compete. When CenturyLink's getting $2,000 per household that, that can sign up, we can't compete via wireless or anything else to provide the same services. And why would we, you know, you're paying for CenturyLink's fiber optic cable to go out, you know, to all these places. And so now you're looking at, there's a lot more money. There's a lot more push and.
Which I can't imagine. I can't, just can't fathom why each one of the companies isn't trying to expand and grow using federal dollars right now.
So this is state, this is state dollars. So, um, Starlink is getting federal dollars, not state dollars. This is all state dollars they're going to apply for.
This isn't passed through front fed? Interesting.
This is part of the big package that the state put forward for. It's not the RDOC, R, RDOC money or I can't remember how you say it. RDOC.
Interesting.
And, um, Jeff, just so you know, um, Starlink, uh, came out with a, um, RV system, uh, yesterday. And it's the same amount of money, um, as the portability, but you could stick it right on top of the, the, uh, and have access and you can turn it on and off per month. So if you don't need it, you can leave it turned off. If you want to turn it on, you can turn it on right then.
I thought I read that it was like $15 a month for dual.
No.
Transport or move.
So that's, that's, so there's, there's the one that is your, your residence. And, um, then you can make it portable for 130 a month, but then that's your main, um, site, right? And you have portability. What this is, is this is for RVers and you can use it at any time, anywhere. And you could get it tomorrow if you wanted to sign up for it. So. That's what I'm thinking. How, how could we go wrong for, you know, $130 a month having access to broadband?
I don't know. We've given Jeff everything he ever wanted this year. Let's not give him everything he wants.
This is on emergency management.
You gotta hold him out a little bit, you know?
But it, I mean, so they opened it up and it would be, you could buy it today and it'll be here. It's not a two-year waitlist or anything. Yeah. Yeah. Look it up at starlink.com/rv, I think, and. Right. Too bad that doesn't work in Glenwood.
Or a lot of places.
But you can keep that and, and do it dual. That's what a lot of the RVers are doing. I think it's a Wii Link or something like that. Wii Boost, yeah. Okay. How, uh, how many times have we deployed that vehicle in the last four years? And full?
Got another visitor over there.
Hi. Well, we've got it coming up on the 7th, right? So we've got a workshop coming up. So.
16.
16. There you go. Yeah, we're good.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are you going to, uh, Lorena, are you going to be able to present us on the 16th with your updated numbers on how many clients you have here? How many clients you have over there? You did that before on February, I think. So.
Actually, I was just asking last week when, when was I, what was I going to make the quarterly presentation? So I will just be prepared to have it all.
Okay.
For you.
Perfect.
I was going to send an email. I, I would like to visit the building with an engineer, um, before I would make it possible. Can I look at the building?
Oh, okay. Yep. Yep. That would be, yep. Dave can tell you who to talk to.
I'll talk to him.
Thank you. Yes, sir. So if, if they purchase that land, are we expecting, is the current landowner of the Juniper Point site the same as, um, who owns the? Is that on the smelter plant property? Okay. Okay, NC.
There's also allocation. There is at least three other radio sites.
Have you um is is Eric and Wright Development aware of that whole scenario? I mean, I can't imagine they have much. Okay, I'll I'll talk to them.
Okay.
Yeah, I was unaware of that, so um I'll bring I'll bring it up when I talk to them and make sure that they're aware that um. We want to make sure we continue that.
Got it. Well, I'm not too worried about them working with us.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily either, but. Hey, I do have a another board pending, which I guess is either for you or you. When we had this little portable mic, I was asking if we had a mounting bracket for that podium. Or could get a mounting bracket for that podium in case we were going to use that podium downstairs. We could stick a mic on it, and I'm curious if that ever happened.
Nope, she's mounting it right now.
That I'm just worried somebody's gonna bump it and it'll slide right off on the floor. Tape it down? Yeah, I guess that works.
I guess though downstairs, will that mic work downstairs though?
Well, I'm sure they have a mic downstairs and that's.
Okay. All right.
It's just a matter of a little.
Supply chain issues is normal?
Yeah, I don't want somebody drop, well, or you have to set it down and then somebody's gonna drop it on the floor and I gotta replace it.
All right. That good?
Yep.
All right, next up, our assessor, Mr. Schroeder. You brought the whole uh office, huh?
We did, just in case we wanted to be prepared for any questions.
That's a heck of a book.
So um so we're here in response to Fire Six conversation with you during um the public comment period um last week. And um.
They're online as well, I think, so. Just thought I'd advise you.
I I told them I would be here um when I spoke to them, so. I I have just a little something prepared to kind of explain the process and then what happened. And so the assessor's office is tasked with using the documents submitted to both the legislative authority. And the assessor's office to calculate the rate and the amount of money to be collected from the citizens and dispensed to the district by the treasurer. Um Fire District number six submitted conflicting documents for the twenty twenty for twenty twenty-one tax year. They submitted, um they had three documents that submitted that worked for their budget. They had the approval of the voters for the rate to be ninety cents per thousand. Then they submitted their certification document for a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents plus the refund amounts. And the third document they submitted was an ordinance or resolution requesting an increase over their prior year's of amount. Of one percent or five hundred and eighty-five dollars and two cents. Um so. Commonly, the rule that the assessor goes by during the levy process is of all the documents that submitted, it's always the lesser of those documents. So whichever amount has the least amount of a of a request either by rate or monetary amount, that's the one that we are supposed to use. Um and so I limited the district by the one percent or the five hundred and eighty-five dollars, not the ninety cents that the voters approved or their certification. What what I didn't remember was that the voter's approval with the district's certification overrules any other documents that they would have submitted. So for twenty twenty-one, I made an error. Um and that was in the amount of ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. In late September, um early October of twenty twenty-one, we sent, we sent preliminary numbers to all taxing districts in Clickattack County. Due to the error that we made for Fire District Six, a custom letter was sent to them. Informing them of the error and to contact us for assistance for their preliminary numbers and how to um correct it. We always make follow-up phone calls to all the taxing districts to remind them, hey, we still haven't received your documents. Um we put in a uh phone call with a voicemail left on November first and November nineteenth. An email was sent to both the fire chief and another contact on November twenty-ninth. Um later that day, a follow-up phone call was also um done, which resulted in a conversation. That they needed to submit their forms by the next day. We worked with them on the numbers uh to use on there and how to ask. For the correction of the ninety-four thousand dollars. At four oh eight PM on November thirtieth, an email was received from the taxing district with their documents attached. And this information was then sent on to legislative authority per um the statutory requirement. When calculating the levy worksheet for Fire Six, we submitted, we found that they submitted. The correct language to collect the ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty cents from the prior year's error. So the bill they gave you, that money was collected this year for them or will be when second half taxes are are paid. You know, because that's how that works. And then um their ordinance and resolution that they submitted. Requested only an increase of one point five pers- one point five eight percent instead of the hundred and fifty-eight percent. That would have got them up to their full levy amount. They also submitted a certification of only a hundred thousand dollars. So with the correction that they asked for of ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty cents. And their ordinance increase of only one point five five eight percent, the amount that we could um calculate for them to collect was only a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars. And twenty-three cents. So that um. I did, I did reach out to them and um. Talked to the fire chief and Billy and I will be going to their uh fire uh commissioners meeting in June. To help them, to explain to them what happened, to explain to them how they can collect um what they thought that they were going to receive. We also had the Department of Revenue review our um our process, like the doc- the documents that the Fire District submitted as well as our worksheets. And the Department of Revenue concurs with the process that we did in twenty-one for twenty-two. Due to the limitations that the Fire District submitted. If they submit a letter this year, twenty twenty-two for twenty twenty-three collection. Stating that the decimal was simply placed in the incorrect location. And if their certification, their resolution and ordinance submitted allows them to, we can calculate a correction of an additional thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And that is um limited because of the hundred thousand dollars that they certified that cannot be corrected. So we we do work diligently with taxing districts when they submit their their documentation in a timely manner. We've we've held, we've held districts' hands and and helped them fill out uh their forms when they needed to. But it has to be a cooperative effort, so. Any other, any questions?
No, um. I don't, I'm assuming you knew, you will know more when you have the meeting with them in June to essentially advise them everything you're doing right there and walk them through the process and.
Yes, yeah, we'll have copies and we'll have everything of, you know, when you submit this, this is what happens with us and um, you know, to to recommend. A certification amount that's high enough for them to get everything that they ask for as well as their resolution and ordinance.
Does that work? Are they able to go back and get it all or is it just fix it from here forward?
Well, i- in this particular instance, they're only able to collect thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty. Because of certifying a hundred thousand, that limited them as well. And that that certification cannot be corrected. The resolution and ordinance, if they can state that it was just an error and where they put the decimal, we can, we can correct for that. They're still not gonna get a hundred percent of what they could had, had those two errors not been in place.
So it sounds like there's been errors on both sides.
Yep.
Through this process. And what we're, what we were sent was a bill for ninety-four thousand, five hundred and sixteen, and that was for the taxes to be collected in twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
And and so that was the question, is this fix going to fix?
That's already been fixed.
That has been fixed.
Yes.
How was, how has that been?
Because they used the proper language to collect that error this year.
So they collected the the ninety-four thousand dollars this year on top of what they should have collected in twenty twenty-one?
No, so so in twenty twenty-one, the the ninety-four thousand dollars was the levy error. So in twenty twenty-one, they could have received. Yep, you've got that one. They could have received a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and two dollars and eighty-six cents. That's what the um voters approved for them to collect. Once again, they submitted a certification that um limited them to a little bit less than that. And so um. With the with the error that we did, which was, we went with their resolution and ordinance as the lesser of all the documents. They only received sixty thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents instead of the hundred and fifty-five, two oh two eighty-six.
So that's where the ninety-four thousand difference goes.
That error was corrected in twenty-one for twenty-two. So when everybody pays their taxes this year, they'll have received all of that. But by submitting um documents that once again limited them this year, they also under-leaved again. Um but we can only correct thirty-five thousand of that because their certification was a was a hundred thousand dollars and we cannot correct a certification.
Did, I guess I would get kind of to the nitty-gritty, did the county's error cost their money? Or did only their own errors cost them?
It was a combination, um you know, and it's not the county, it's me as the assessor. The county has no responsibility to a taxing district for their levy um amounts. It. It, so my error based on the documents submitted was ninety-four thousand dollars that they did not get that they should have gotten. With the correction, they got that this year, but then they limited them on what they could have gotten this year if you just forget about that correction.
So so each year it would be a hundred and fifty-five thousand?
No. No. As you, so your voters, in this instance, your voters set the ninety cents for the first year, which would have been the twenty-one tax year. The ninety cents would have been. Your number would have been the hundred and.
Hundred and fifty-five.
Yes.
Yes. And that was a one year, though.
That's one year. So what that does is that sets their um capacity for following years. So after that, they would increase their budget by, you know, whatever they um.
One percent usually, right?
One one percent, some districts don't, don't, don't go up to that. Um but let's just say, because it's easier to do it, that they would limit it to an increase of one percent plus new construction and any increase in state assessed. You take that total and you divide that by the total assessed value of their district and that sets their rate. So as district values increase after the first year, that rate will decrease a little bit. If assessed values were to decrease, then that rate could increase.
But they're gonna still bring in a hundred and fifty-five thousand plus one percent, right?
Starting in twenty twenty-two.
I- if if they submit the correct documentation, it's it's in that range.
Their their intent was to go from thirty-eight, thirty-six cents to ninety cents in order to pay for whatever they need to pay and to bring that money in. And that is for multiple years, not just one year, right?
Yeah, it that set, the ninety cent sets their rate for their budget.
Right. And that is multiple years.
Yep.
And so so my question is, is year number one, we didn't collect any of it in twenty twenty-one, right?
Well, they collected one percent over what they had been getting.
So they didn't col- so they collected thirty-seven cents maybe, not not the ninety cents. So there's a huge delta here. And that was the very first year and that was, that was a mistake by.
It was just over thirty-five cents, yes. That was a mistake by me based on using the documents that they submitting.
Submitted, okay. And so so then none of that money was collected that year.
Right.
You're saying that a good portion of that money, it was collected the next year?
I'm saying that the total error was collected this year, not a good portion, the total error.
So so the total error, so so does that mean that the people went from paying ninety cents to to a buck sixty in order to make up that error?
No, no. So. What the levy rate went to was point, was eighty-six cents, just over eighty-six cents. Because they limited themselves on their regular levy, right? They asked for the error, they got a hundred percent of the error, but they didn't get a hundred percent of what they could have collected.
Because of their owner.
Because of their error. Had they, had they done that, they would have received. Two hundred and fifty-four dollars, six hundred and sixty-four, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents, which would have put their levy rate at a dollar thirty-seven. If they had submitted all the documents to give them the most amount that they could possibly get.
In order to make up what they didn't get the year before.
They didn't get and then a current rate based on what the voters approved.
Based on what the voters approved, but so so they submitted, the second year, they submitted the wrong dollars that went from two hundred and fifty thousand down to. A hun- a hundred, is that what you said they some certified?
Well, the the the, yes, to a hundred thousand is what they certified, yeah. But they didn't get the whole hundred thousand because the lowest amount was their one point five eight percent over the prior year. Because it's the lesser of the two.
So instead, so so it could have been two fifty-four, what did they actually get then?
They actually got. A hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents.
A hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Yeah, but that's, I I guess I would point out that that's their error.
This current year wa- was their error, yes.
Right, so the only thing that that concerns me is. I won't say county error, the error that was created here.
That was corrected.
It was corrected, but did they receive what they missed out on?
Yes. For last year, yes.
Well, they're not short anything from the error that we created didn't cost them a dime.
Correct, other than they got it a year later.
So they got last year's that they should have got this year?
Yes.
But then they submitted incorrect documents that kept them from this year. Because to me, it looks like they're sitting there in the same spot they were last year.
Pretty much, yes.
Ninety-five thousand.
Yes.
And.
Except I can't collect the ninety-five thousand because of the hundred thousand certification. I can only collect the difference between um. What what they got and that hundred thousand, which is only thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty. But if we can get all the documents together correctly this year, for next year, they'll be where they should be. There's there's.
So we can still fix it, they can still get the money.
We can fix most of it. We can fix most of this year's error, not all of it.
It just takes both sides communicating and working together to try to fix it up.
Because it it seems to me like their error this year could have been, this is what we know, we put in our, you know, our certification. Not 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 understanding that they were supposed to put in a certification for the last years as well as this year.
No, your certification is is different. So you have two different documents. You have your document where you start with the dollar amount that was levied for them last year. That's your ordinance and resolution. That's your ordinance and resolution. And then any increase that they ask for, it can be 1% or they can, it can be a different percent if they want to go to their highest lawful levy, and that's where we were trying to get them this year, to their highest lawful levy, not 1% over what they received last year. Their certification has to include enough cushion for any increase in new construction, any increase in state assessed, and in this case, like that increase for the error. The prior year, they certified 155,000 and something, which was pretty close to what the voters would have given them. It was still an under-certification. Most taxing districts go, you know, 100,000 or the larger taxing districts, a half a million dollars, they certify over what they think they may be able to receive.
Because that caught me when we were doing our own, because I'm like, but we only get 1%. And they're like, no, set the number up here because you have to... Yeah, okay. So they didn't do that, they just took the one?
Yeah.
And then it came in up here, and they're stuck down here because...
And you have to remember, with the taxing districts, it's volunteers. You know, and so that's why it's very, very important that they work with us so that, you know, we don't get conflicting documents and that we're able to give them as much as possible.
So is the other issue that they're giving you conflicting documents on the very last day, they can give it to you?
Yes.
And so you don't have time to go back and fix it?
Right. And we don't even have time to review it. I mean, when we receive something at 4:08 on a Friday, that's the very last possible day that they have to submit to the legislative authority, it's really hard to get everything that's submitted reviewed, go through everything that we have for their levies, and mentally prepare, okay, what are they doing? What are they asking for? Is it what, you know, are they going to get what they expect? It takes longer than an hour.
Do most of our juniors turn in in the last two days, three days?
No, it's usually... We always have some that turns it in that last week. But most of them, I would say it's usually like the week before. It's, you know, I mean, they filter in the whole time from October down through. Because the other thing is they're required to have public hearings, and they're required to advertise those public hearings according to statute. So we are not the police of whether or not they've done that correctly, but they are required to do that. And we worked with the city of Bingen last year. You know, their person that was working on their documents, and they called us, and we sat down with them. We said, okay, this is where you put here, and this is what you put here. And, you know, we worked with the county general and the county road, you know, with Rob in the past and with Jen this past year. And the city of Goldendale pretty much contacts us every year. You know, they, because they're at their highest statutory rate that they can be. So it's very important what numbers that they submit, so they call in every year. I, one of my intentions was always to have a class for the taxing districts, and I have not been able to accomplish that. We're still hoping to try to do it this year. But as you guys know, you have all of these things that you have to have done, all of these things that you would like to have done, and the have-tos are precedent over what you would like to, so...
I think the key is like that pre-submental conference, you might as well call it, to get them on the right page with a little handout that says, hey, you need this by this by this, and...
Well, the districts...
And hope that both sides work together to get it.
And they're not totally in the dark. You know, the districts are sent a worksheet that gives them, you know, the amount that they received last year, what a 1% increase would be, an estimated new construction at that time, because we're not always, we're not certified at that time. And because there's two levies that a taxing district can ask for. They can ask for their 1% over last year, and they can ask for their 1% over their highest lawful levy since 1985. So we give them those two numbers. They're there, it's just which ones you use.
And it sounds like they put both, or they did the 1% plus the 90 cents, and...
Well, not 90 cents, plus the 94,000.
Yeah, wasn't that, they went from 36.8 to 90, correct?
No. Because they didn't ask for it all. They should have went from their 35 and change to 89, da-da-da-da-da, because their certification was less than the 90 cents. That's why it's important to put the cushion in your certification. So even though the voters gave them 90 cents, they were limited by what the voters gave them and their certification if we had not made their error by using their resolution. So that still would have only given them 89 cents.
It would have given them 89 cents the first year.
Yeah, the first year.
And then when you, so now you're looking at the second mistake, the second rolling of mistakes that go on top of that is, do you look back at the previous year at it being 89 cents?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and so when we gave them their numbers for this year, they had two sets of numbers. They had one, which is what they did receive, which was with the error. And then they had another set of numbers that was as if that error had not have occurred. And they started to use those numbers. So they put, so resolutions are required to have both a dollar amount of increase as well as a percent. Their dollar amount of increase was fine. But instead of the 158% increase to get to that dollar amount, they did a 1.58% increase. So their decimal point was in the incorrect location. Levies are very difficult. They're not black and white. They're really hard to explain without everyone who's looking at it seeing the documents. And that's why we're going down to the...
That's why we pay you the big bucks.
Districts.
So by the end of...
I talked here for about 10 minutes, and I started getting confused.
By the end of the third year, they should be able to have collected all the money they should have been able to collect throughout the entire time if they fill out their stuff right by this November?
No. Because they certified 100,000 dollars.
Got it.
So they can only collect for the second error, 35,250.
So there's still matter what, they're going to be down 100,000 because of that certification?
It's... Did I calculate that one? I don't think I calculated that. But I mean, it's a little less than that, but yeah, it's less than that, yeah.
But if they certify it correctly, they'll still get their 100,000?
If they certify correctly this year, we can get them to where they always should have been for this year for next year's tax collection.
For this year, but they're still going to be down 100,000?
They're still going to be down some, yeah. I'm not going to commit to a number that I haven't calculated.
Roughly 100,000. Got it. Okay. Any further questions?
Nope.
Thank you for the education lesson.
Yep. Hopefully, there's other taxing districts listening, and they can...
Call you and schedule a meeting to have a sit-down.
Yeah.
That's what I would be doing.
Or at least call in.
Thank you, ladies.
Because that was a little deep.
Well, I have in the past done like color-coded everything for the commissioners based on, you know, this is what the county submitted and everything, and then here's where it goes in my worksheets, and this is how you end up with what you ended up. It was a good education thing, but it's been a while since I've done that, so...
Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
All right, I would entertain a motion to recess.
I would make a motion to recess for lunch, come back at 1 o'clock.
I will step down and second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will see everyone after lunch. We are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clicktack County Commissioners to order at 1 o'clock PM. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the business agenda as presented.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I don't know if we have more minutes down there, still looking at them?
I didn't, just...
Okay, okay. We will defer the minutes until next meeting. We will next move into citizen comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. At 1:25, if the board chooses, they will respond to the comments, but this is your time to comment to the commissioners. We will begin in the room as always. Is there anybody who would like to provide public comment? No? All right, we're going to go back online. Any public comment? Star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. Turn your camera on, unmute yourself, get our attention, and we'd love to hear from you. We have a whole bunch of new people joining.
Well, it looks like we're going to have to just start picking names randomly.
All right, well, if there is no public comment, which I guess the holiday weekend is starting early for people. Just get our attention somehow, otherwise we always have work we can be doing.
I say gambling is illegal in this state, or I'd pull out $1 right now and say it ain't going to make it the whole half-hour.
Gambling is not illegal.
Can't gamble on things like that without permit. That's why I said that.
Oh.
I want to be in the paper next week.
Vacation sick.
I have a question. We always set half an hour aside. But, you know, granted, I'm remembering the dinosaur days when I used to sit in the back of the room. And it was literally just sit around for a half an hour most of the time because there was no comment. And I watched some of the other counties, because some of them don't have citizen comment, but the ones that do open it up for citizen comment. But then when there is no comment, they just move on with the next item on the agenda.
The reason I think we always don't is because we have usually the public meetings and the public hearings, and those are set at a certain time.
Right. So they keep that at the set time. So like, for them, they would do citizen comment at 1 o'clock, and then their public hearings at 1:30. But then if citizen comment is done, they move something else into that time block, move up a department update or something to cover that time slot. Not that we're ever going to have that problem here.
I don't know, we have that problem today.
It was something I always wondered, because, yeah, I mean, back in the old days, sitting there, it was, I mean, you were just BSing about stuff to kill the half an hour.
Well, that would be a good time if you would like to learn anything from the dinosaur in the room. And ask any questions.
Citizen comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to follow up on this morning's discussion. If the taxing district submits all the correct numbers and documents, the number that they cannot recoup is $60,211.
And that's it?
As long as all the proper...
And is that, was there levy? Was it a three-year, or is it just a new base at 90 cents?
It's a new base.
It's a new base, so going forward. Okay. Does, any questions for the assessor? You know what we're talking about?
I do, unfortunately.
You have questions?
No, I said I know what we're talking about.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we are still open for public comment. We have a hand, Ruby.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. I've been doing some digging. There's been a lot of conversations lately about under canvas and the solar project, things like that. But I've been doing some digging and came up with your personal permit, your building permit for your primary home as you listed it. And I never did find a conditional use permit making an Airbnb. So I'd like you to maybe clarify or maybe clear that up for me because I don't feel like you should be able to be making decisions about a conditional use permit when you've refused to get one yourself. And then, second of all, since Vern is on the line, a couple of weeks ago, he threw Richard Foster out of the bus. And I have a serious problem with that. Obviously, our commissioners aren't going to stand up for the people that they employ. But he has done a lot of work for this county, and for him to be out there playing military was very condescending, and I just think it was really bad for him. So with that, I will lower my hand and let you go.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Ruby. All right, is there any other, anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Is that Sherry? Sorry, I couldn't, it just switched over. Ms. Bosque, is that you unmuted?
This is Sherry.
Hi, Sherry.
Hi. First off, if, at your five minutes, if you could clarify who stepped up to the table and said there was a $60,000 tax something? If you could just, at the end, clarify who that was and what that was about, since it is in a public meeting. And then also, you know, regarding conditional use permits, as you know, has been my biggest concern with the county is how these conditional use permits are used to cite projects that, as we know, you know, obviously shouldn't be where, or zoned, or whatever is the problem needing a conditional use permit. And also brings me to my concern with, it's, in January, after Commissioner Anderson was elected, one of the first things he did, January 14th, was write a resolution to use conditional use permits to start citing the industrial solar complexes that plan to come around Goldendale. And with that said, I am hoping, I am requesting publicly that the commissioners talk about what is planned, at least talk about Carriger. The city of Goldendale said they would have a meeting. I am encouraging and requesting that this meeting happens so that people understand what scale of solar is planning to be cited around Goldendale. And with that, Commissioner Anderson, on your property, if it is an Airbnb, do you have an ADU that you're renting out on that property? And does that not need a conditional use permit to rent as an Airbnb? I mean, what's the county regulations on ADUs? I mean, maybe you can clarify that as well, because I know some changes have been made recently regarding ADUs. And are ADUs allowed to be rented as Airbnbs? And is that what is on the property at 58 Anderson Road? So I know I got a lot there. Are you going to meet with the city, talk about the solar? Clarify if it's an ADU or how you rent your property as an Airbnb in this county? Do you need a conditional use permit for that? So a few questions there. And also, who stepped up to the mic earlier, and what was that about? Thank you. Hope you got them written down. Thank you.
I apologize for not introducing myself earlier. Krista Schroder, Clicktack County Assessor. A follow-up on Fire District 6 levy calculations. I apologize for not introducing myself earlier. Krista Schroder, Clickatuck County Assessor. A follow-up on fire District Six levy calculations. It was, had to do with their budget and the under levy amount, and we are working with them to correct this. So. There's anything else, you're welcome to call me at my office, 519-773-3715.
Thank you, Madam Assessor. Alright, anybody else looking to provide public comment? Star six, unmute yourself, turn your camera on. Ms. Harvey.
Elaine Harvey, Goldendale. I just have a question for Jacob. I know he mentioned, when we were talking about solar moratoriums, that all the projects in the night road would be under the cut process, and I just wanted to reaffirm that. Will, will these projects go into the cut process, or is there a possibility of, of them going through FSAC? Because I remember that statement pretty clear, so that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Okay, any other public comment? Is there anyone in the room who would like to provide public comment?
See, that was a comment.
That was a comment. Can you provide your name with your comment?
Nope. Nike, Nike's the name, sir.
Alright, back online. Is there anybody who, I don't, wow, I guess we still have 40 people.
Yeah, that's a big number, sir.
I mean, most of them are employees.
I was gonna say half of them are more employees, so.
Okay. We'll give people a couple more minutes, since we have more people showing up. Would either of you like to provide public comment today? Nope. Okay, back online. I'm not seeing anybody. Is there, either of my seatmates would like to respond to any questions?
Not until the end for me.
Okay.
I'll take a shot at a couple that we had. To Ms. Ruby, as far as Richard Foster, I appreciate your comments, as far as I did think that Mr. Harple's comments were a little stinging. As far as Richard Foster has not been gone the last three years on military duty. He has been gone intermittently over the last three years. We do have a very robust economic development department. That, so I think the, you know, comparing us to Skamania County, as I'm recalling, that's what it was, I don't think that's an accurate assessment, so I would agree with you on that. To Ms. Bosque, as far as the question about the conditional use permit, as far as for the Night Road, or anything out on Night Road as far as solar, and the resolution that was passed is, yes, the board did pass a resolution that any, any solar project, I suppose any project, that connects to the Night Road substation, whether it's in or out of the energy overlay zone, would have to go through a conditional use permit. I believe that is our current resolution. They have the energy overlay zone, any projects that are within the energy overlay zone do not go through a conditional use permit, but we, the, the line that goes out there, and since the substation is outside, anything that connects to that substation would go through a conditional use permit. I can't, I can't speak to Airbnbs and ADUs. Ms. Harvey, so that was the, kind of the same answer with the, whether a project would go through a CUP or not, or go through FSAC, is really entirely dependent on the project. Any, any project can choose to go to FSAC. Nobody has in Clickatuck County before, because we, we have a pretty robust permitting system that we have used in Clickatuck County, and so most developers, both solar or wind previously, have chosen to use the county's process and not go through FSAC. But in the future, if a project wanted to, they can, and there's nothing we can do about it. It would, that would be at their discretion. And again, back to this CUP versus, if it is a project that's within the energy overlay zone that is not connecting to the Night Road substation, so basically everywhere else, it would not go through a conditional use permit. It would go through the energy overlay process.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Christopher. I guess I would add to that. The reason for the CUP on Night Road is because the substation itself is outside of the E O Z. Meaning, anytime you go across the borderline of the E O Z, you're now outside the E O Z, which makes it has to be a CUP. I know, right? And if you don't like it, it will go to FSAC. So, yes, FSAC is the State Energy Site Facility Evaluation Council. Anytime we say no, a solar or an energy site might go up there to see if they can get a better verdict. I don't know if you're aware of the news article in the Yakima Tribune from May 20th, explaining FSAC and the Horse Heaven Wind Farm and Solar in Benton County. Benton County denied the, let's see, they have the math here, 72,000 acres, which is 244 wind turbines plus solar. Over the course of 72,000 acres in Benton County, said that's not where we want that. The energy company went to FSAC. And FSAC ruled essentially that this wind farm is consistent with Benton County's land use plans and zoning, zoning regulations in place at the time it was first proposed. Meaning, if you change the rules later, they only have to abide by what was in place when it was first proposed. It says the site, citing council concluded that the project is allowed use because neither the county's comprehensive plan or its zoning ordinances, quote, "clearly convincingly and unequivocally prohibited." Meaning, you are a product of what you have in place when the site is proposed, not when it's built. So for us, we have to live under what we currently have in our comp plan. And if we say no, it goes to FSAC, and FSAC's gonna say, well, you have nothing in there that unequivocally says it can't be here, so here it is, and it's right on your fence line. So that's how you get one process to the other. We're choosing to do it locally and take the heat by locals to try to protect them. I would agree with the Richard Foster statement. I think he's a very stand-up and good person, and anybody that serves in their military and continues serving in their military deserves our utmost respect. And I find it very disheartening when that's not the case. That's all I have, sir.
Alright, this is still public comment. I'm going to continue to open it up for public comment. Star six, unmute yourself, turn your camera on, get our attention if you would like to provide public comment. Yes, come forward.
See, somebody would have owed me a dollar.
I couldn't resist.
Our mic's green, ma'am.
Yep.
Thank you.
Kathy Moko, Goldendale. I just wanted to say that in the last two weeks, I've been watching, maybe three weeks, all the buildings and the houses moved and the buildings taken down with the neat giant machine, and it's really cool. And I think I know that that's all gonna turn into parking. Maybe you could tell us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I forgot to turn that on. Okay, is there anybody else online who would like to provide public comment?
Do I have any time remaining? This is Sherry.
We don't usually do rebuttals, and I don't write down time remaining. I'm sorry, Ms. Bosque.
Okay, well, hopefully you can still answer my questions about conditional use permits for Airbnb and ADUs, and if not, direct me to who I can seek that answer from. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, is there anybody else who has not spoken who would like to provide public comment?
Jacob, I don't think I took my full three minutes. Can I just say another statement?
If, sir, if we're gonna allow rebuttals, I would say that we shouldn't.
It's not everybody.
Until 1:25.
Claiming about no comments, um, this is not a rebuttal.
Ms., Ms. Harvey, let's, what do you have to say?
Yeah, you guys put your building on one of the parking lots that was behind Main Street, so now Main Street is pretty full, and the businesses have, you know, no parking for their, for their business, and the people that work in the businesses have limited parking, and you guys put your big fancy building on top of our parking. And I'm not sure if you guys are building more parking areas, but it'd be nice if it was open to everybody, because I was chased out by Dan Christopher over a month ago from a parking lot, and, you know, I didn't realize that commissioners are parking attendants. It's part of their job description, and, and that's part of, you know, why, how they, um, I just don't understand that. But anyways, you know, the Main Street parking is an issue, just to say that, and hopefully the parking lots that you guys are making is gonna be open to Clickatuck County residents, or people who work in the Main Street or in the vicinity, and we're not gonna get chased out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Okay, we've got time for one more public comment.
I'm gonna need more time, sir, when I, when we get to our time again.
I kinda guess. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment? One last person. Okay. I guess I will, since both of you spoke, I will go. Ms. Harvey, as well as Kathy, yes, Ms. Moko, the buildings that have come down, all three annexes are going to turn into additional parking that is going to be available to the citizens' residence of Goldendale. We, yes, we did take this parking lot. We've also expanded the parking on the west side of the jail, and in the end, we'll, we'll, we don't know the exact numbers because we're redoing the, the parking south of the jail, the design of that, but we'll add about 100 new parking spots to downtown Goldendale, all said and done. So, that is that. Second, in response to Ms. Bosque, ADUs are not allowed to be used for short-term rentals. The ordinance, when it was passed, prohibits short-term renting of ADUs. I assume that it does happen in the county all over the place. There's roughly 300-plus short-term rentals within the county in totem, last I checked. And, yes, I do have an Airbnb. I use that to supplement my high county commissioner wages, and I do that out of my primary residence, not an ADU, and I do that when I'm not needing the house for myself. It allows me to go enjoy life and do other things. So, and then with regards to a CUP, in order to do home sharing or Airbnbs, we do not require in Clickatuck County a conditional use permit. As far as I know, there is not a single Airbnb or short-term rental that has went through a conditional use permit within the county. The commissioners did speak at the beginning of last year about updating ordinances, because the city of White Salmon, the city, the county of Skamania has all, and most other places have instituted some form of short-term rental ordinances. The commissioners worked on that for a time, and I don't know where that ended, the last I checked.
Waiting for a comp plan update.
We may be waiting for the comp plan update in order to get it through. With regards to Richard Foster, I, I worked with Richard Foster pretty much across the aisle for about five years. Yes, he is in the military. Yes, he gives his time to the military every year. He is our economic development specialist, and he does a great job at what he does. With regards to our economic development team, he is underneath David McClure, who is our executive director of economic development, who works tirelessly and who I have the utmost respect for. With regards to comparing that to Skamania County, we are doing things quite a bit different than Skamania County, and our projects are of a completely different size and nature than Skamania County. With regards to SEEK, yes, Richard Foster attends SEEK when he can, but that is not one of his primary duties of his job description, just like Mr. Harple's well aware. In my natural resources position, I used to also attend SEEK meetings, but of course, I could not go to every one. We also spent two years where we didn't have meetings in person, so we are getting back to the stage where we can finally attend meetings, and we can have people in the room, and it sure feels lovely. Mr. Christopher, you wanted some time?
I would like to clarify the accusation that Ms. Harvey was chased out of the parking lot. I believe the facts of that matter, where I was coming over to have a conversation with you, when you got belligerent and racist towards me, and I turned around and walked away. At no time did I even discuss parking or where you were parked. So you can assume what you want to assume, or slander how you want to slander, but the truth actually matters, and that's what I have to say about that.
Commissioner Sodder, anything?
I'll defer my time, other than I'll say I'm really gonna miss this.
Yep.
Well, good thing you still got six more minutes. Okay. Alright, being that is one, Mr. McDermott, we have two minutes left. I see you're unmuted. If you can keep it under two minutes, you're welcome to provide public comment.
I can do it easily. First, can you hear me?
Yep.
Good. Uh, could I, could I go back to the solar panels and wind energy projects in the county and just make a couple of public remarks?
This is your, your two minutes, sir. You can say whatever you'd like.
Alright, thanks. Uh, when the wind project started, I contacted people and tried to encourage them to have takedown clauses in their contracts, so that the, the windmills didn't eventually get left up with, it just become unsightly on the, on the landscape after they're become obsolete or don't work anymore. And I would make the same recommendation to the solar projects. I know that I'm, I'm late in making these comments now, but I wonder if there are changes that the county needs to make to protect the public from unforeseen circumstances. And I would just like to recommend to the commissioners that if there are some changes we can make in the rules now, that we should make them now, so that in the, or start working on making them now, so that we can protect the public. It's my opinion that when the, the dam was put in, we were guaranteed the lowest electric rates, and that went away with the whole Enron scandal. Uh, I'm talking about the Bonneville Dam. And we don't want that to happen again with energy projects that are selling their energy down to Texas and places like that here in Clickatet County. And, you know, we actually are allowing our lands and our resources to be used and I just want to try to protect the public in the future. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott. I, what?
Go ahead.
I will say, Mr. McDermott, decommissioning plans are part of every large project that goes in front of the county. Your two minutes are up. Not a, not on, as well as the decommissioning plans, there are also required to be bonds that are being, that to be put in place. Those bonds used to start around five years. The new decommissioning update that our public works director may be changing that moving forward. The idea always was, in the first five years of a project, if the owner walked away and somebody else is going to assume ownership of it, you have that asset there and that value there. That's not to say that there's no volcanic eruption, no, like in the Midwest, tornado or something that can come through and, or hurricane that can tear up all these panels. And like you, none of us want to see the public holding the bag on any of these large projects for any cleanup. So I think we are all on the same page with that. With regards to electricity rates, in Clickatet County, we still buy all of our county, all of our power from the Bonneville Power Administration, likely from Bonneville, as well as the other dams along the river. What makes our prices higher is the cost it takes to serve that power to our residential customers as well as our businesses, but we still buy all of our power through them and it is still the cheapest power that you can find at the wholesale market. With that.
And, oh, go ahead. This is Commissioner Christopher. The one thing I'd also like to point out before it hits the open radio in the morning is the commissioners do not get to pick and choose what companies and who they sell their power to. That, that is not something that's in our wheelhouse, whether they sell it to Bonneville Power Administration and it turns around and comes back down your line to your house or whether it goes to California, that is not something that commissioners can regulate on a company. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Commissioner Christopher. Okay, we are going to close public comment. I would say thank you to everyone who had questions and comments. We, we respect all of your comments and we are happy to answer everything that we can. With that, we are going to move into a public meeting to, for the consideration of the approval of sub 2021-01, a subdivision alteration, parcel number 4162853-0005-00. And the Goldendale vicinity applicant is Michael Heron.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
I'm Michael Heron.
Hi. I have Victoria Allen here in, representing Michael Heron. The plot of Old American Way subdivision 78-14 was a seven-lot subdivision. Lot five was created and maintained as a park since it had a community well on it. The community well was officially decommissioned August 31st, 2021, and the landowner wishes to remove the park designation. Six out of seven of the landowners within the plot of Old American Way signed off on the alteration, which meets the requirements of RCW 58.17.215. Plaid alterations are not required to go back to the planning commission. The board of county commissioners is the legislative authority to approve alterations to the plat.
Questions from my seatmates?
That answered one of them with the six out of seven. Was, was there ever intention to actually build a park there or was it just the land because the community well was there and you couldn't have a property on it?
The research that I made on it, it was, it was created because there was a well right in the middle of it.
And so they joined the city water system? Is that what happened?
They have, I believe they have a group B water system. So that well was never, that well was never put in line.
So if it's a group B, they would be on a well. Where, what well are they on?
It's more.
Here comes, there's a chair over there.
On the face of the plat here, it actually listed a series of well that is currently on these parcels and within the subdivision. The well on Lot Five is decommissioned, so it's no longer in use, but they did establish another group B water system that's showing that they do have hookups available to serve this lot. So health department already verified that and also these soil logs to prove that this is a buildable site.
Is there another subdivision behind this yet?
So other than the original plat of Old American Way, they also have another one that's already established, is the first addition. Currently, we do not have any other pending proposal in front of us.
Is that, is that common to have the, is it common for the planning commission to make it mandatory that there be a park or not mandatory? I'm trying to get.
It's not a requirement because this original plat was approved in the seventies and at that time, the only parcel or area is available for a community or for a well to serve the lots is on Lot Five.
Okay.
And because of other restrictions, this will no longer be a buildable lot. That's why they just labeled it as a park. No improvement was ever made to make that.
And that's from the seventies?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No, that answered all of mine.
Okay. Would entertain a motion if somebody would so move.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve SUB 2021-01, which is a subdivision or is a alteration of parcel number 04-16-2853 in the Goldendale vicinity. The applicants are, is Michael Heron.
I would second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve sub 2021-01. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for coming in. I just wanted to make sure that the local landowners were good and you handled all that, so.
All right. Next up, we have our code compliance officer, Lim Pratt, with his final department update. Would you like me to cry in public or not? I don't think we're allowed to either. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Pratt.
As Commissioner Anderson indicated, this is my last, final, regular scheduled monthly update to the Clickatet County Board. As I have submitted my resignation to the board earlier this month and my last working day will be on June 3rd, 2022. A co-compliance help guide has been produced with locations of electronic and paper files and a summary for each of the 24 active cases, 10 which are nuisance cases. Since my report in April, there have been two certified certificates, excuse me, certificate of non-compliance issued for building code violations. Three cases have been closed. One case, the complaint purchased the property. An interesting, interesting case that I was investigating has been suspended. It was closed in 2021 and reopened in 2022 because the owner wants to subdivide his parcel. There are two dwellings which is not allowed on one parcel. And one is unpermitted, so one of the dwellings is unpermitted. The owner has received temporary occupancy permit. Building Department cannot perform a final inspection and issue a certificate of occupancy until the parcel is subdivided. Planning Department cannot sign off on the subdivision until the owner has made improvements on the private road leading to the second dwelling via Public Works Department. And apparently the owner does not have the resources to make improvements to the private road. The Lake, North Lake Drive situation, several more complaints have been received by co-compliance. This is in regards to the primary property, problem property up there. An investigation has been opened for the original problem property owner and a certif, or excuse me, a certified letter was mailed and they have since responded with a phone call to discuss putting in a fence. A letter was sent to complaints informing them of the nuisance investigation. Two complaints were received on an additional property in the North Lake Drive area and a certified letter has been mailed to the property owner. Three investigations were conducted on Woodland Road. All three property owners have started cleaning up their properties with one also putting a screen, up a screen fence. Follow-up meetings have been conducted where progress photos have been taken and case files updated. One property has three quarters of it cleaned up due to a court order in a civil case, though progress has been stopped. I have since learned that the vehicles which were moved have shown up on another property, which I am investigating, where the property owner is currently erecting a screen fence. In a 2018 case, a court order, a court order was lifted and non, or excuse me, eight non-operating vehicles have been removed. That's where there was a divorce and the court had ordered a stop on any selling of property or removing of vehicles until the divorce was filed. The property owner is optimistic that he'll be able to remove all of the Hulk vehicles and scrap by the end of summer and there is a lot. The recommendations I had given, emailed each of the commissioners and given to you were from the Board of County Commissioners. I guess it'd be the workshop or I'm trying to find a.
That's right.
Throw me a bone here, but, yeah, so workshop. And so I agree with just about everything that's in there, so I don't have any, any recommendation for any changes with that. But I, I do, you know, I do agree that updates and changes to Clickatet County codes are needed, but they also need to be published on the website. Right now, I'm being told that there isn't a complete set of current, up-to-date codes in the county. It's all piecemeal by department. So what I had learned through process was I needed to go to each department director to find out, you know, what updates in the particular title, whether it was zoning code, upwork, that kind of thing. And I, I can't speak to why that, that is, so I don't know. Co-compliance Office is an investigative office for violations of county codes. Several times requests have been made by the departments to have co-compliance issue courtesy letters for email or phone call complaints. I believe this is a good tool, but there are no provisions in the procedures for co-compliance or in Title 24 nuisance abatement, which we, which, abatement which requires written complaints for co-compliance to act. I believe until there is a change in the policy and procedures, it would be better for each department to handle courtesy letters. And these are, are, I think, a great tool to do in order to head things off when somebody says, hey, something's starting to happen, happening next door. And a perfect example is I got a phone call today of a property owner, his, his adjacent neighbor is erecting an eight-foot fence. And the requirement is unless you have a permit beyond a seven-foot fence, you need that permit if it's higher than seven-foot fence. Any sheriff deputy has authority under Title 1.20 to enforce any and all, in all county codes. General and limited authority police officers, the co-compliance officer outside of holding the law enforcement commission can only enforce Title 8.1, Title .10, 8.14 and Title 24. These are the only areas that even mention a co-compliance officer's authority. Also, I have a strong opinion that this position requires a minimum of a limited authority police commission, county, which is countywide authority, which is placed underneath the sheriff and whether it's placed underneath the sheriff office or not, it should be someone who has experience in investigations and putting together a case file for possible court proceedings. This is not a position for a rookie. You, you work too independently, you have to interact with the other departments and you need to be able to relate to people and have that, that experience of being able to interact with various types of personalities and issues with mental health and that kind of thing. Many of the same people I deal with are also the same people that state, city and county law enforcement deal with, many of which have extensive criminal histories. I've come across a lot of convicted felons since I started this position. Some of them have violent pasts. If co-compliance is placed solely under the sheriff's department, the physical office should stay in the administrative, administration building. I firmly believe that because there's too many daily interactions with other departments. And you can see in my comments there, the position requires coordination with and obtaining information from, and, and it goes down the list, just about everybody, you know, all departments in the county, so. The only thing I would add is I've been, I'm almost up to date on the case file reports as well. In fact, I think I only have one more left to type up.
Well, hopefully we don't have to ever have to call you back for witness testimony if those ever go to some kind of trial. I do have one question. Who will be returning citizen phone calls in the interim? Are we, is this board going to need to make a decision that your phone gets forwarded to so-and-so until there is a replacement? That's something we need to make sure we have handled by June 3rd, so we don't just start racking up voicemail messages.
Yes, we need to make that decision. Do you have any?
So that's not for you, that's me for.
I did leave my contact information in the co-compliance help guide as well, so in case, my personal email and my phone, in case there's questions that, you know, the person needs to get ahold of me or one of the commissioners needs to call me.
So when you issue a certificate of non-compliance on a property, do you then close that case out because there's a certificate that's now on file or do you put it into a suspended form or what, what is?
It, it depends on what, what the certificate is. So if it's something where it's a nuisance abatement case, it's held, you know, in a suspended form. If it's a co-compliance where it's, it's a building, unpermitted building, something of that nature, then usually I'll close that case out. Those certificates are attached, you know, so if somebody's doing a title search.
Right.
They're attached to the property. Also, the information is updated into SmartGov, so there's electronic file, the documents, so it's not just the little typed narratives, but also the documents are uploaded as well. And usually with building, for example, building code violations, it's a building that is issuing the certificate of non-compliance for those.
Okay. So for example, with that, that house that's, they want to subdivide, they can't subdivide until the road gets put in, but a road could be $100,000. You just issue a certificate of non-compliance, it goes on that parcel, singular parcel, so that when it actually does get split and the road gets put in, then that's when they can fix that.
Right.
But whoever, if somebody went to, well, I guess nobody, somebody could buy both of them together right now and spend the money.
Well, and in that, in that situation, I, you know, the reason why I suspended it, I mean, obviously is we don't have a certificate of non-compliance yet on that property, but the reason why I suspended it was I can't do anything more until there's some sort until there's some sort of resolution with, uh, with planning and building. And building had issued a temporary occupancy for that second dwelling. So, uh, with that underneath the co-compliance is okay, well, they're, they're temporarily compliant until these things can get resolved. And at some point, if building comes back and say, or zoning, or excuse me, uh, planning comes back and says, okay, they're, they're non-compliant, uh, we need to have something done, we're, he's not doing the road. Uh, you know, and they did go through a workshop on that. So, so the owner knows what he, he needs to do. And so when it comes back from one of those departments saying, okay, we're, we're doing this. So if it is, uh, planning that issues the certificate or if it's, uh, building, then I reactivate the case file, I go ahead, do up the notes in there. I get the copy of the certificate of non-compliance and I apply it to that case file and to SmartGov. And then I would, uh, close out the case. If there's more that needs to be done, and typically in those cases, there are no, usually there's no citation or, or violation notice issued in those cases. Uh, it's just a certificate of non-compliance. So, uh, but right now, um, you know, it's, it's kind of in limbo until something happens with those other departments in relation to the property owner. Questions for?
Uh, no, very thorough, thank you, I'm keeping this. And I guess I get to be the first one to say thanks for coming and you shouldn't be leaving and we shouldn't allow it.
It's been tough.
Bang your gavel, make him stop.
Wish I could.
No, I, I would, I would agree with everything my seatmate said as far as, and I, I relayed that privately to you as far as you, it's been a really, we're, we're sorry to see you go. I'm, I'm happy for the next stage of your life. And as, as we all know, these are not, um, none of us are indentured servants. And we can actually be in charge of our own lives and choose when we come and when we go. So, oh, oh, I thought I was being, the hook was coming.
She was trying to tell you, you were going.
You're going, yes, alright, thank you.
And it's, it's been, uh, tough for me, uh, because the, you know, discussing this with Nellie and, and, you know, this is the next chapter in our life. And I remember, uh, when I started off with Elensburg PD back in 1985, I remember an officer, you know, telling old war stories and stuff like that, and I swore I'd never be that, that guy. And, uh, I catch myself sometimes doing that.
Being that guy?
Being that guy.
Well, when you get to Texas and it's sweaty and hot, just remember us.
You can always come back and run for commissioner.
I, well, you think the seat's hot here, I don't know.
Alright, thank you so much, Lim. You know, it was our goal to try to find someone that we'd have you a little longer so that you could do some training. I hope that, you know, if we can, we can, that person can be in touch with you because you created a, a good, um, database and way of managing these cases that I think is, is gonna be beneficial for the long term. And so thank you again for all of the, the hard work and effort you've put in for this county over the years. You've been a, the true asset.
Dave Clapton, the Commissioner Chambers?
He started.
You're usually banging the gavel when people clap.
Those are boos. Alright. Next up, we have, uh, the review of the historic presentation grant applications.
Preservation.
Preservation.
Yes, and all three of you have the.
I read what was on there.
I know.
The applications on your Google Drive. And the request for proposals was published in the Goldenville Sentinel for the weeks of April 6th and 13th. And out of that, we received the three applications. And the total for the three requests is forty-five hundred dollars and we budgeted five thousand. So you guys get the task of if you want to give each museum their request, if you want to give them all the same amount, or if there's something different. Do you want me to read you which museum requested what? And what their cost of their projects?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause there are projects that cost more than what was requested. So you can give that if you would like to. This fund is growing really, really fast.
Why, if their projects cost more than what they requested, why did they request so little? You would think ask for the moon and get what you get.
I think that's just the Clickatet County, they're just kind and they just wanna share it and they don't wanna over-request. And in the past, it's always just been shared and it's always been a thousand dollars 'cause there was five requests. But in the past, there's only been two to three hundred dollars going in a month. And now there's an average of like six to seven hundred going in a month. So the more recording that's done, the more money that fund gets.
Yeah, I mean, I just think they're, I think you're exactly right is that they're, well, yes, kind is one way. I think also realistic and folks don't ask for, they ask for what they need.
Right.
Not what they want.
Right.
Can, can, can you break it down and give me the numbers of what each one of them wants? Alder Creek was how much?
Two thousand.
Alder Creek, yeah, they're requesting two thousand and their total project is five thousand that they're trying to do.
Okay, and next?
And the West Clickatet is requesting a thousand and their total project cost is one thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. And Twin Bridges is requesting fifteen hundred and their project is fifteen hundred.
And I did talk to the Historical Society that pretty much told me over here and pretty much said, whoops, 'cause they're not on your list this year. I think they had some turnover and somebody forgot. So, um, they won't be making your list this year, but in the future, they'll be back.
If we don't use the money, it's still there next year.
Right.
I mean, so.
I mean, we bank it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, and it's growing like twice as fast than it ever has, so. Like already in three months, you could have, yeah, we can cover one and a half of the requests.
I would entertain a motion, gentlemen?
Um, I would actually make a motion to, uh, grant the, um, all three grant requests in the amount that they asked for. So the, so totaling forty-five hundred dollars and, um, I would, I would reserve the balance in the fund for future grants in, in future years.
For bigger projects, yep. I would second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to, uh, recognize the forty-five hundred dollars in grants to the three museums. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I think we should also be cautious that, you know, the recording fees, this is kind of an outlier. Like things have been crazy as far as in the real estate market and things may drop back down.
Having a reserve isn't horrible.
No, having a reserve is not horrible, so.
And not spending all the money you have is not a bad thing either.
Yes, I know that's a, that's a very unique perspective right now in this country. It is possible to actually spend less than you make.
Next up, we have comprehensive healthcare update and discussion regarding the lack of mental health professionals in the county. We have Eddie Dibble, the Chief Operating Officer, and Ron Gin-Gingler. I apologize if I mess up somebody's names. And they may not even be here, are they online? Well, about that, they have a minute.
Sorry, I had to, wait.
Well. Sharon, uh, are you gonna be able to go a little early? You have to? Okay, well, we can all sit here awkwardly for a while.
I would also, I would also say that when we do take comment, we take comment from our staff and public health officials and not just everybody in the free world.
No, we don't, we don't want this.
Public health personnel, um, not a free for all. Um, with that, here's the bills. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of seven hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-nine cents and the account payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero dollars for the date ending May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay, pay estimate number one to James Dean Construction Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seven cents for the Courtney Road Project CRP three four two and CRP three four, three five three.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to pay, pay estimate number one to James Dean Construction for six hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seven cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass the consent agenda with all six items.
I'll second that motion as well.
There's a motion and a second to pay, uh, to pass the consent agenda with six items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I have a little, uh, board pending.
Absolutely.
For Mr. Sodder since he's here.
Sure.
Uh, had a meeting with the, um, Historical Society about, uh, paintings, pictures, whatnot for the walls in the courthouse, uh, or in this building, sorry. They are interested, they can put them all on a, um, on a drive and present them to us. I talked with, uh, Pat over at the photo gallery over here that does all that. She has, for the most part, the same pictures. But I wanna make sure we get permission from the Historical Society and maybe even, um, have something on the pictures recognizing the Historical Society because they were their pictures. You got a couple options, you can do the framed like this with glass that you normally see. In doing so, you're about two hundred and fifty dollars a picture. And if somebody bumps them and they fall off the wall, they break. Or you can just go the canvas wraparound, which is what I would recommend, which is about half the cost. The question lies, is what I was getting from the Historical Society and Pat is, are you just looking at a few pictures? Are you looking at a particular floor? Are you looking at all floors? Are you looking at conference rooms? Do you have a ballpark budget that you're trying to stay under? These are all items for the next step. I have a, um, the Historical Society wants to come over and do a tour. So I kinda would like to at least kinda know that ballpark information as we take the tour. So they know what they're, what they're looking at.
So I guess it was too much to hope that they already had a bunch of pictures and frames and everything.
That was far too much.
Way too much, so, uh, I would add to that, I had a conversation with, uh, the West Clickatet, one of their board members, uh, because if we put just this historical, it will only be pictures from the east end of the county.
No, this one does all of them.
Oh, does, do they do all of them?
Have everything.
Oh, great, never mind, wow.
So yeah, they do east side, they've got all the, um, Alderdale stuff, Carisso Museum stuff over there. They got White Salmon stuff. So that was kind of, gets us to the next step is, where, how big do you want each floor representing a different, say, commissioner district? I mean, it, it's kind of, as we move forward, um, those are things we're gonna have to choose. But, um, you know, I guess the first thing was what extent, um, do you wanna do this? Do you want everything in historical or do you want standard new times artworky stuff on some floor or in conference rooms? Do you wanna leave conference rooms empty? I mean, I know when I originally brought this up, god, a year ago, with other paintings, there was still gonna be funding in this building's budget, the cover set funding. And, and I have not received any updates to say there won't be. If we're looking at some, you know, five or ten thousand dollar number or something. And the other thing I get constantly is this building does not fit in this community, it's too new. And so people like the idea of aging it with aged photos. So, that's where I'm at, okay?
Well, I liked, I liked and I still like the idea of having, um, some historical things from across the whole county in the building, is it's a whole county. I, I also was hoping they had a vast collection of stuff that they were looking for homes for that we could, um, curate for them over here, but no. As far as, you know, how mu- I mean, I mean, it's not an art gallery, um, so.
Not gaudy.
Right, just some, just, I mean, we do have quite a few, um, bare walls. It's nice as far as, especially down the halls when people, you know, that there would be some progression to it too, that it made some kind of sense that they were grouped in a way from a region or an area or an era or something. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of folks that this is, like, would be better suited to advise on than necessarily me or the board, other than, uh, it would be nice to get some idea as far as a proposal, as far as what would be some ideas and what the cost would be associated. I do think we'll have some, um, dollars left over in the project, not what we'd hoped, although every dollar we spend is a dollar we don't have for something else. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm okay with something reasonable.
Yeah, there, both those groups, Historical Society and Pat's, who would be the one that did the printing, you know, they, they, there's plenty in their groups, plenty of people. There's plenty of, um, photo-minded, uh, people that would be far more, uh, knowledgeable than me about putting a photo on a wall at what height. I like hairs if they're crooked or not. And they're, they're willing to step up, they just need to know where we're at. And that's, I just needed to make sure that we're on the same page before I go.
So I guess from my perspective, uh, we've got, you know, multiple museums, multiple different viewpoints. And it would be nice, like, we, we named all of our rooms. It would be nice that the namesake is somewhere near so you can see what the namesake is, and that's an easy one. But in terms of the other one, uh, one of my easy thoughts would be is, is we take a, a set of pictures that the Historical Society can, can come up with, or the three historical groups. And then we put it out for a vote, um, on the top ones that people would like to see. And we can get the, um, newspapers involved and, and do some advertising and let people see these old pictures. I mean, there's some really neat old photos and then we take the top ten or fifteen and we find a way to put them.
I, I kinda already had that somewhat idea. They're gonna present all of the, the documents to us essentially on a scan drive. I don't know how we necessarily print those and show them out to the community, but I guess you can do it via Facebook post and voting or something like that. But, uh, but yeah, all the pictures were gonna come in to us to figure out which ones we wanted or if we wanted to designate an employee to be, uh, the hand picker or if we wanted to leave it to the community to do it digitally. Maybe we can upload them to a county website page. I just don't know if you can do polling on there to. I'm sure there's a way. I like the idea though.
Alright, so moving, moving forward, um, talk to them, let's have them come take a tour and see like how many spots that look good.
Get an idea on how many we're talking about, whether we're dealing with twenty or forty.
Yeah.
And, 'cause we already know the cost per, so then you can just do the math. I like your idea, so you're thinking each conference room have one of the mountain of that conference room? Is that what you're trying to say? Okay.
And I could see, you know, we have three floors with three, 'cause I see one of the, the best places to put things, I'm assuming, would be in the hallway, you know, going down. And I could see, you know, we have three floors with three, because I see one of the, the best places to put things, I'm assuming, would be in the hallway, you know, going down where people are going down. It's a big open space and it would kind of make sense that maybe they were themed of a sort each floor where they're not just randomly, um.
That's what I was saying by district, because then you got all the tree pictures on one and all the wheat pictures on another, you know, because that way you're not willy-nilly through there. Or by age.
And what their ideas were too. That's, that's what I'm kind of curious what their ideas are.
I'd say mainly they were thinking about the lobby area. I would just kind of tell them there's not a lot of wall in the lobby.
No.
All that sound deadening panels and the TV over there.
The TV.
So, yeah, all right. I'll meet with both of them and come back with more info.
Great. Do you have anything else for, uh, for funding?
Yeah.
You know, I like where I live. Okay. Sharon, would you like to do just your board update and we can keep the, the senior advisory board discussion until afterwards unless they show up?
Okay.
Because I'm sure as soon as you sit down, they'll walk through the door.
The comprehensive?
Yeah, I mean, that's how it always works.
First was just an update with, um, from the last time I was here, I had case management. I had a, uh, my Goldendale case manager had been on extended leave, is still on leave, and I did have, uh, approval. We were able to do an emergency hire of a former case manager who's been assisting, which has been a huge amount of help, uh, to assist with our, it's our Medicaid, um, Title Nineteen Case Management Contract work. So she is still covering and it's still a little bit up in the air, um, in terms of when the other, when or if, um, the other case manager is going to be back. And so for now, she, uh, Ailea is still available to help, um, hopefully, uh, through June if needed. Um, and so, uh, she's been able to keep up on, on our, uh, caseload assessments and that for, uh, this end and, and provide a lot of assistance there. Uh, and then an update just on our nutrition program. So our congregate meal sites had been closed since March of twenty twenty. Trying to remember the pandemic. So any, we had to shut down the congregate senior meal sites, um, because of, uh, COVID. We did, um, just reopen our, uh, white salmon, Goldendale and Lisle sites, uh, at the start of May. Um, and so that is going well, but we still, it is a, a balance because we still have a lot of people on the home delivered meal program, a lot more than we ever had, you know, pre-COVID. So it's, it's definitely been a shuffle and, uh, management for our, um, nutrition staff and, uh, transportation staff and our volunteers. Um, we do continue to have, uh, more and new volunteers coming and helping with, uh, our Meals on Wheels program and with, with helping at the sites, but we're always looking for more volunteers. Um, and we have also resumed some other in-person, uh, senior activities, which is like our strong, strong people, uh, classes, which is some of our evidence-based, um, programming. Um, that we get some resources and funding for yoga, um, Alzheimer's support group here in Goldendale. And we're looking to expand or there's, but we're just trying to still take things slow and be cautious so that we don't end up with a full shutdown. Uh, again, and we do have, um, some different parameters and things in place that, um, in, in terms of doing, you know, cleaning and sanitizing and, uh, encouraging again, people if they have any symptoms to test and not come in. Um, and we have, uh, fortunately, a lot of tests available at, uh, both our senior services offices, um, as well as N ninety-five masks that are available that have been provided through, uh, different groups like North Shore had ordered, uh, large supplies and had distributed to various areas to provide out. So we've been making sure that we have and offer out those COVID tests and, um, masks for folks. Uh, transportation services. So we, right now, will be going into, had mentioned previously that this is our year for our typical Washington State Department of Transportation grants, uh, through the Consolidated Grant Program, which is the bulk of our funding for both our Dial-A-Ride and Fixed Route Transportation Service. And so I will be looking at, you know, talking with the board about potential projects and that, that we may be wanting to submit and see what you're supportive of. Um, but we're also currently now in the process of our, um, uh, human service transportation plan, um, update, uh, which is done every four years. And so we have upcoming public meetings, um, that the Regional Transportation Council, um, that we have, the RTC meetings. We have, um, uh, with Dale Robbins out of Vancouver, um, uh, because we're in the Regional Transportation Council, covers Clark, Skamania and Clickitat Counties. And so that is that human service transportation plan update, and part of that involves some public meetings and a couple, a survey that will be going out as well. So we do have a public meeting planned for, um, June eighth in Goldendale, five o'clock down in the Mount Adams Room. There will also be a Zoom option for that. Um, and then we'll be doing one on ten-fourteenth in, at the Pioneer Center in the Senior Dining Room down in White Salmon on the fifth. Um, and then we have a, uh, again, a survey that will be going out for people that can complete online or in print. Again, getting feedback and information regarding, um, service, uh, transportation needs, gaps, um, uh, to update that plan. And typically, a number of items that have been in the plan is the lack of weekend transportation service. Some of those kind of things that will probably come up as a need again. Uh, but, uh, potentially in this biennium funding cycle, there may be more resources available. Uh, WASDOT has been, um, sending out some communication, encouraging, um, uh, providers and, and folks to apply for more that they're seeing. They have, uh, a higher level of funding and have some more resources available. So it might be an opportunity that we'll be able to do some expansion service. But some of that discussion will have to come, you know, in terms of how that match will be met because it's not a hundred percent funding. Uh, but there are different levels of match depending on the types of projects and that too. Um, but typically, we'd be looking at wanting to, again, you know, apply for support of continuing our existing Dial-A-Ride and Fixed Route Service. Uh, and, uh, uh, likely there'll be a few, uh, vehicles, um, in terms of capital, uh, requests because of just wear and tear and age on some of the vehicles that we'll need to look at, um, in that update. So. So again, there'll be some communication going out in emails and in the paper regarding the public meetings and, uh, encouraging folks and, uh, to distribute out to different folks to get information back on the survey as well, so that can go into what we're looking at in terms of, uh, future project, projects or needs in Clickitat County. So, um, so the, the last one is gonna be, you know, my advisory board, uh, update is one of the requests that.
They're behind me.
Oh.
So we, we may pause and then come back to them.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I did have a couple of questions for Sharon before, while you're, while you're there. So you ref- you referred to the home delivered meals and I know during, uh, COVID, then that, you know, a lot of, or everybody, I mean, a lot got switched to that. And I know there was, um, additional funding that we were getting to cover some of those additional costs. Where is that, where is that funding at as far as, as you said, we've reopened our congregate meal site starting in May, but I know there's, where our, our home delivered meals are still higher than they historically were, and I know substantially, okay? Um, and so what are your thoughts on that as far as the dollars and when we're, you know, when I'm advocating with ADSWA, is that?
So right now, um, we did get ARP money too. Um, so not only did we get Older Americans Act, which is typically the full federal funding and that that we get for congregate and home delivered. We got a higher proportion of that, but we also got American Recovery Plan dollars, uh, to subsidize, uh, more of that. So right now, we're looking fine. Good.
How far is the lookout is what I'm, that's the real question I'm asking.
And that's a little bit of a challenge in terms of the forecasting, uh, in terms of where we're looking at. Um, depending on the shift, because the, the thought has typically been that once more of the emergency order in the open, because that opened up to home delivered too, to not just more of a very specific qualification.
Right.
It opened it up to any senior, you know, sixty and older. Um, and so because they haven't cut that piece off yet, but we're reopening, it's still allowing folks to get home delivered that don't necessarily meet like the homebound criteria. And so there's a little bit of transition happening with that over this next month or two, um, because it's not really clear on when the emergency approval for having it wide open is.
Can expire.
Going to expire because that will shift then more of those folks, there will be people that won't qualify under home delivery and then they would shift to congregate and so that, that money is gonna, but if we continue to have still a lot higher qualification in the home delivered and in, and that, and then having the congregate, it, it may get a little tighter. I just ha- I have to crunch some more numbers to determine kind of, you know, worst case kind of forecast, but the, um, uh, we do have typically and have had more nutrition money than typically has been available. Um, the only issue is going to be again, if we end up back in a, a, a shift again, like with sequestration a number of years ago, when there was a recession, we got cut back in those areas. So right now, with what's been allocated to us, uh, for this year, at this point, we're, we're looking good.
Good. One more, if I may. Uh, the volunteer coordinator position, I know that's, has been filled and is being used. Can you, I mean, I think that's a, that's a real positive thing and I was surprised you didn't kind of highlight that in your report for folks.
Yeah, because I'm actually was gonna be coming up, getting on the agenda again to talk about a grant, additional grant specific to volunteer, um, program to help additionally subsidize and extend that out that just has come to my attention. So I thought I would kind of loop that up, but in terms of just an update, um, right now, we're in that, we're still in that phase of a lot of it is developing more of the volunteer core. There's, um, Isaiah's been doing, you know, a lot of outreach and trying to connect with different people. And some of that is just building up just comfort level with folks too and getting more volunteers in and onboard, um, to carry out, um, some of the programs. So we definitely are getting also referrals in for needs that we have people kind of waiting on because we don't necessarily have the volunteers to match with them yet. Um, the other piece is working on, um, some of the more supply material side of things. So, um, I know Isaiah's been working, had communicated with the, um, uh, solid waste department and that too about some possible vouchers and that for use at the land, you know, at the transfer stations and, and, and then also seeing about vouchers for, um, like, uh, dirt huggers and that for removal of what we're getting a lot of requests on and there's a lot of need for is, um, helping seniors that need, um, uh, yard debris and that, you know, for, because are, are definitely our priorities in the program to our life, health and life safety items and, um, clearing out, you know, brush and getting rid of a lot of that stuff for fire safety as well as just their access around their home. And then, um, uh, materials and supplies too for doing minor home repair and things like that. So we, um, United Way, um, has awarded us funds again this year and, and typically we've gotten, we've received United Way funds through United Way of the Columbia Gorge to help support a number of programs and senior services. And this year in particular, I addressed more of the need related to our Volunteer Connections Program. Um, because we have the coordinator now and we have resources to do, you know, mileage reimbursement and that, but now we need actual materials and things too. So, uh, some of the equipment, um, to do some of that, because initially the thought was that we could use some of the people's equipment that we would be helping with, but we're finding, you know, a loppers from nineteen thirty aren't as, as effective or, you know, things that are in, not to say the older things, sometimes that stuff is in better shape, you know, and holds up better. But it is, um, a bit of a challenge. Um, so part of two, what Isaiah's going to be working on is, is getting, um, you know, we have a lot of really great senior volunteers in that too, but it is, uh, we need some of those young, you know, high schoolers or folks that can have more stamina to do some of that, again, that physical labor out on some of people's property, um, for removal of debris and that. So we're going to be trying to focus on, on recruiting some of those, uh, younger folks to help with some of that physical labor too, but.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, one option for your tools. I know the Underwood Conservation District has a tool sharing shed, um, that might be an option for some of your people to use.
Yeah, and I, you know, part of, um, I know that we would likely get a lot of donated, you know, really good donated items too. Some of our thing is, is where we're gonna store those and make them accessible in the different areas that we're working in, that it's not more of a hardship to even go and try and get those items, trying to place those in areas that are gonna be fairly readily accessible, but also stored in a good way. So, you know, there's a number of those things that hadn't thought about in that initial, you know, kind of, um, plan. Um, but, uh, I think we definitely have, you know, a lot of folks that'll be generous in, in providing that, but we've also got to figure out, okay, before we ask for it, where are we gonna put it? Because I don't think, uh, in the cubicles down here is gonna work for weed eaters and, and whatever, you know.
Isaiah's cubicle is way too big for him. He can store lawn mowers, weed eaters, hedge clippers.
I don't know, you appreciate it. Carrying those to the lobby, right?
Based on the time, do you have more, uh, senior advisory board members that you're expecting to show up?
So I do have just, um, the two here and there was a couple of that said they may be able to make it. So that was.
I just figured if they're sitting here, we might as well finish this off since we're pretty close to the time anyways.
Yeah. Okay.
So you're scheduled for two forty and it's two thirty-four right now, six minutes early.
Because otherwise it's.
So I think we're good.
It's either that or you're probably gonna wait an hour.
Yeah, no, I think we'd be good to go.
Okay. Well, there you go.
Okay.
Grab a couple chairs.
Oh, big chair. Sorry.
Oh, you're early.
Well, I thought I was. So as a, interesting, so during our last senior advisory board meeting, um, the advisory board members had, and, and it's been an ongoing advisory board item is, uh, the concerns about long-term care options for seniors in Clickitat County and more specifically the assisted living project that, uh, through Columbia Cascade Housing that was slated to break ground or that a couple of years ago, you know, pre-pandemic. Um, and then in terms of updates that have happened in, over the recent years was that there's, it, it's not really moving forward. There's a shortfall of funding. And so, um, the concern and the, the, the discussion with the advisory board was feeling like as advocates for seniors. was feeling like as advocates for seniors in Clickatet County, that they wanted to present to the board or come and talk to the board about what kind of action the board could potentially take, or what could happen to make sure that that project doesn't die in terms of some type of assisted living or long-term care, other long-term care options in Clickatet County, because people have to actually leave the community that they are from and want to stay in, because there isn't anything. And the worry is that the funding that had been secured for that project, obviously, there's likely a, an end date or timeline for that. And so I had requested to do a department update and have senior advisory board members that could come to come and talk about what their concerns are and what they would, in their capacity as advocacy for seniors.
Thanks, Sharon. My name's Shelley Baxter, and I'm in District One. And this is Anita Wellenbrock, and she's in District
Two.
Two. And this is Gavin Carmichael, and he's in District One, and he's also our ASWAD rep.
He's on the Advisory Council for the Area Agents on Aging and Disabilities Southwest Washington.
So I thought I'd just talk a little bit about what's, I've been hearing lately, actually, now that the COVID is winding down, and I've been attending the congregate meal site and the senior yoga and the senior strong people. And so I'm getting out to talk to folks more. And what we're finding is people are still expecting this assisted living to be going forward, the ones that ever heard about it, which a lot of people still haven't heard about it. And so there's been quite a bit of concern, frankly, like, well, what's going to happen? And as you know, that we've also had an inordinately high number of seniors move into our little county relative to a lot of areas. And as I speak to people, people don't seem to have a plan for what they're going to do. And what we're learning through all the great information that we've been getting from Sharon is there's not much you can do in Clickatet County as you get frail elderly. So for example, we, a story recently, some folks moved here from Seattle outside of Goldendale, and suddenly their neighbor shows up at the door, and he's got dementia, his wife has died, and he's hollering at their door. And yeah, so what happens to a guy like that? And, and the person I was talking to, so what's your plan? Because the police were called and Adult Protective Services, and yeah, there's no support for this guy living by himself out in the country. And the gals I were talking to that moved here from Seattle, what's your plan when it happens to you? They don't have a plan. They, they're hoping that somebody will take care of them. Or an acquaintance who lives up Snowden, his wife got early onset, and it was extremely difficult. And of course, there's no help in Clickatet. Eventually, she had to be relocated to Portland, and he lives up Snowden. So we know that there's just not much help here. We have adult family homes, and I was just looking up the other day on, so how many beds do we have in Clickatet? And I totaled forty-six in Cherry Street Manor and Country Rose and places like that. I don't know if that's true, but that's what I, my research found, forty-six units for assisted living. And that includes, of course, disabled, not necessarily senior. So there's not, not much available. Turns out there's this thing called a senior age dependency ratio. We have very high seniors in this county. We've got four thousand households with seniors in them. Twenty-four percent of our county is over sixty-five. It costs an elder index for a couple with no mortgage living in Clickatet County. This is all the statistics. Thirty-four hundred dollars a month, just minimum expense to live in Clickatet County. So I'm thinking, okay, here's a scenario. There's the broader area, then there's the area of getting the facility built in White Salmon. And when Joel presented to us, he, he was looking at about seven thousand dollars a month. And everybody that was there said, what, I can't afford this. Well, if you sold your house, you might be able to afford it. But then what's, where's your wife going to live? Sort of thing. So, yeah, in Medicaid, they're looking at for this facility, what, twenty-five percent would be Medicaid, and of the maximum household income of twenty-four thousand dollars a year, you could be housed in the new assisted living that we're hoping, hoping to get. Otherwise, well, if they don't build it, where, where is somebody on Medicaid going to go? As we know, it's a state program, so anybody on Medicaid would have to go somewhere in the state of Washington. They can't go over to Hood River or the Dells and end up in, so they'll end up in Yakima or Vancouver. And that's, that's a case where you do qualify for Medicaid. So frankly, it's, I think it's a crisis. The average person lives in assisted living twenty-two months, it turns out. But twenty-two months at seven thousand dollars a month, it's going to be really tough, unless, again, unless you sell your house. So even if we get our assisted living built in, in White Salmon, it's still a stretch for many people. So the point I'm making is, this is a two-fold issue. The assisted living facility, you have to be pretty well down the line to be able, to have to be in assisted living. But then there's all the people that are aging in our rural county that are not going to have home care, because as Sharon keeps pointing out, we don't have much home care available, and we don't have the certification programs. So I'm, I'm just kind of laying out the concerns I've, I have and what I've heard from the folks that I, that I've been in contact with since, especially since COVID. So I know Gavin wanted to, you know, talk about what he sees going down, down the line. But did you want to say something?
I'm listening.
Okay.
I guess I'm leaning forward. Well, thanks for having us. So my name is Gavin Carmichael, and I serve on this board as well as the Area Agency on Aging and Disability in Southwest Washington. And, you know, I think Shelley and others, and you guys are well aware of the, you all are very aware of the burning platform out there with our aging community and, and the behaviors that are having to occur because of the aging population, they're needing to leave the area. And there's kind of a plethora of reasons for that, and I'll spare you all, you probably know a lot of the details. But it's a workforce development piece. It's a, do we have the facilities piece? It's a financial piece. And so there's lots of components to it. So since this assisted living facility is so far along a path right now, it seems sad to leave it where it's not going to be brought to fruition, and I hope that doesn't become the case. So I know there's a funding gap out there, and, and a couple of commissioners, I appreciate you coming to our meetings and giving us the update. And it's been a few months since we revisited this, and we didn't want this dropped off the horizon. So I, I think, you know, we're, we're the, we're your advisory board, not just our, your, your questions board. So we didn't just come here with questions. So I think our advice from our advisory board group is to look if we can develop some sort of a structure or a pathway ahead to see this to fruition. And there's, there's lots of options, and we, we could put together some of that for you to help. But I think there's options like perhaps approaching, you know, Columbia Cascade Housing Authority, or that group with Joel and his team over there, or some agency. But I think if there's a three million dollar gap, or whatever the latest number is, we figure out what that number is, step one. And we kind of get a hard number behind it, whatever, if it's three million, two million, you know, with inflation and building costs, et cetera. So we nail down that number. And then it seems to me that a course of action would be to put together a fundraising campaign. I think there's a vested interest in the county as well as the communities that would, this would serve to reach out to them. I, I sense that there is a lack of knowledge on a lot of the folks that we talked to in the county about the, what the campaign is, how big the gap is, who will it serve, what the ask is. And if the county, if, if residents want to step up, they could have, you could, we could put together a campaign that includes a continuous giving campaign, and maybe people that want to bequeath their, their assets over time to a certain fund that may be managed by somebody, you know, an entity external to the county, I would recommend. But you could also have a fundraising campaign. And honestly, those don't generate huge amounts of money, but they do generate, you know, awareness, and awareness can lead to other things and other giving. And so I think our ask is, the advisory board is just if we could, if there could be just a plan put together on what the road ahead is. And, because we do get asked in the community, you know, that where are we on this? If, if you say some number, sixty percent of the people don't know where, don't even know about the, the campaign about the assisted living facility, the forty percent that do really are kind of really curious, what are we doing, you know, and should I give to this? And does it have traction? Does it kind of go on for two years? Is it a five-year program? So, and then, of course, I think we all know that the deal that longitudinally, if we don't do something today, as it goes on, it's not getting any cheaper to build this. So, and then the other piece of it is, it's not just a build the bricks and mortar piece, but you have to figure out a way to staff it. And so these are all things that probably should be talked about by some sort of a structured, either group or committee or effort to figure out how to do this. And maybe that answer is going to be just to have, you know, farm it out and have somebody contract an entity like Rock Creek, I think, in, in Stevenson is contracted up. They contracted out, somebody runs it, and the staffing challenge becomes theirs. But it's ultimately the community's challenge. So if that means somebody reaching out to community colleges and building, you know, personal care attendant programs to figure out how to get those resources into the community, then maybe that's what needs to be done. But I think if we could just build a plan, or there needs to be some structure put in place to kind of move forward, and then we share that with the community, raise the awareness, and then figure out how to generate the dollars. That's what I wanted to say, and I thought we'd offer that advice to the group. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
Questions or comments? You want me to go first? Yeah.
Wow.
First, yes, thanks for coming in. I appreciate the advisory board's input on this. Yes, Shelley, you've, you've, you've really hit on this, that there really is two different issues. I mean, they're, they're related to each other. One is the actual bricks and mortar, the facility. The other is after it's constructed, the affordability of it for folks to be able to use it. As you said, there's, you know, we are, and, you know, this project is being led by CCHC, Columbia Cascade Housing Corporation, which I'm on the board with that. And so it was really important to that organization, as I said, that we have some beds that are available for Medicaid. Do I wish it was more? Absolutely. You know, twenty-five percent, as I said, was kind of the sweet spot of the economics to even make it work. And the seven thousand dollars is probably, that seems a little on the high side, but I think that is realistic. I've had some experience with it, and that's probably about where we're at with, if it's a, if it's a higher level of, you know, kind of the average level of care, you probably, that is about what that is going to be. And it, that's going to be a huge hardship for a lot of folks. I would say the, probably what we need to do, CCHC is leading this project. There is a funding gap. We did have, I did get the State Director for USDA RD down here toward the site about three weeks ago. It was very successful. And we're moving along. They've kind of identified some hiccups with the, which I had brought up to the board last week, that potentially one of them was, because the county bought the site, and we've leased it long-term, ninety-nine-year lease to the, to the housing to build this facility. You know, leasehold interest is generally not a big issue with, as far as security, but the federal government is the federal government, and that is, this is the Anita, wherever she is, has identified that potentially as one of those things that we're going to have to deal with, as far as that, is the leasehold interest adequate security or not for the facility. But we can work all through that. The, the funding gap is, that is accurate. We believe it to be somewhere around three million dollars. It was about two point two, and we're estimating about three now with inflation between what we're able to raise. And so we've got to fill that gap before we can break ground on that. As you, and this may be if there are, if there are folks that have some expertise or experience in fundraising, I think CCHC, we have no experience at all in that approach. That's not what we typically build. Housing, you know, low-income housing, and it is, we don't have to go fundraise the gap. It's you built, you, you build what you have the dollars for. And so we don't have any, we don't have that expertise or capacity as far as, especially at that level. And so we do need some help with that, I would suggest. That would be my suggestion to my board as far as on that, that if we're going to go that route. The other word that we do want to look at it, and where the advisory board and the community could be very helpful, is that, you know, we have other sources of gap, of gap funding besides, you know, donations, benefactors, you know, we can and have requested, you know, legislative grants as far as just, and that really comes from our legislators understanding that this is a priority project in their district. And that comes from folks reaching out to them and saying, hey, what can you do to help fill that gap? And the, you know, in the next biennium, that would be one of the targets that I think we should, we should look. Not any one of those is going to, single-handedly, I wish it was, I wish somebody would just come and write us a check for three million dollars, and we'd be done, and we could get going next week. But I think we need, we need the help as far as the CCHC folks need the help. Joel and his group, he's got, he has excellent folks. But again, they, we don't have fundraising, that, that's not something that's in our wheelhouse or in the staff wheelhouse. And so that's going to have to be developed. And that's something that as a, as a policy, the CCHC board is going to have to weigh in on it. Is that a, is that a thing that we want to do or not? Because we, we have never done it before. So.
So, and, and I don't know the answer. Is, is, in order to put that structure in place, would it be this group, you're, you all, or you or whoever, that would approach them in doing that, to put together some sort of a structure where that, that fundraising initiative could exist? You know, there, there are devils in the detail, right? So there's probably things like they'd need to hire a halftime FTE, somebody that would be a fundraising person, and this would be their sole charter in life for half of their life. And they would just be dedicated, putting together these certain structures and meeting with people and, and running a small committee of people to, to move it forward. Is that
Or the county, could the county do that?
Write a three million dollar check?
No, no, no. Approach.
Oh, as far as fund rate, or, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the county, I'm not going to speak for the county, but go ahead.
No, I mean, this is not a county project. It is a, we looked at the, you know, it's obviously in our county, it is important to us, and it was important enough for us to, you know, secure the land that was, and donate the land. I, my suggestion would be that I, as the county person that's serving on that board, bring this issue to the CCHC board and have, you know, and if you folks are amenable, have you come and present this and, and join in that conversation. And we, because this is an issue that's not, it's not going to go away. We can't, we have to get this solved, and it could be replicated.
We don't want it to go away.
No. No.
No, we're with you, I agree. We'd be glad to do that.
We also have to, you know, and it can be, and if the solution can be replicated, because we were talking about the west end of the county, the issue is not only the west end of Clickatatt County, it's across the whole county, and we're going to have to solve that. So I don't, I don't want to use any more of the chair's time, so.
Yeah, I don't disagree with anybody in what they've said. My hope is that this would have already been built, because then I could be pushing for Phase Two on this side of the county. And I can't do that until that gets done. But, but like my seatmate said, this is not a county assisted living center, this is more of a gorge or a regional. So it's not something we can do unilaterally, it has to go through the housing corporation. And with that, I like the idea, I don't know that we can get to 3 million, but you got to start somewhere. So, yeah, it's a good idea to at least bring up with them and see where we go from there. And then the bigger idea, like Commissioner Soder said, is publicly lean on your representatives at the state level. This county is not a taxing county. We don't just raise your taxes willy-nilly to fund things. The state, on the other hand, doesn't seem to have that problem. And they always seem to run into revenues, budget, budget revenues that they weren't planning on, and still raise your tax again, and they don't even know where they're going to spend the last part. So there's money there that they can earmark. If your representatives are on board with pushing for those earmarks, and I think this is an election year, I think it would be a perfect time to lean on them about that.
And I think that might be something back to Columbia Cascade Housing, is there's not been much word in the local news about where, where I think people thought the project is maybe it was a done deal, and it was going to break ground and happen. Because I think the last article, that's kind of, and actually when Joel came and did a presentation at the request of seniors, you know, at the Pioneer Center, it was like, oh, yeah, this is it, here's the floor plan. And then for, it's not a done deal, so whether or not they can, you know, get another article to make sure people are clear and know that, oh, well, because there may be somebody that would donate to make that happen, but I don't know in terms of kind of getting that word out, too.
So, I guess I'll say, trying to be realistic, trying to fund a $3 million gap with fundraising is going to be really difficult. We had the City of White Salmon pool in here, which is very, you know, kid-friendly oriented, the whole community behind it, just like a senior housing facility, everybody's behind it. They're having a hard time fundraising right now for the pool. So trying to, trying to come up with that money. I think Jacob Bertrand is on right now, probably listening, getting an article written about this is likely good. I always try to, try to look at things a little longer picture. The last thing I would do right now is build anything, because the prices have gone so astronomical. Hopefully, in the next year, the prices will come down to a little bit more reality. We're already starting to see that in the lumber market and the futures market, thank goodness. So hopefully, you know, as inflation is moving up, that may be the case. But if we can get some more funds out of the legislature to help bridge that gap, and then reality reexerts itself on pricing in the next year, so hopefully we can get to this point. But yeah, hopefully that $3 million gap can go back to what, it was originally 1 million? I mean, it was a $1 million gap, and the prices went, you know, through the roof, and now we're at a $3 million gap, so.
Well, and I think the concern was, is some of that set to expire in terms of grants? You know, if it wasn't done by a certain time, is that gone? And then you're starting from scratch again?
So in a lot of these grant programs, they understand that things take time, and there's funding, and so you apply for grant, you know, extensions, that's a normal, that happens all the time. A good portion of the state budget is a rollover budget, because the, either the transportation projects or the capital projects just didn't get done. And yeah, I hope Joel has all that well in hand. If I know Joel, he's planning for everything. But again, yeah, as much as I want to say, we'd love to take the ball and run with it, you know, we will be, continue and have been advocates for this, we will continue to be advocates for it. It's not a, it's not a county project per se, but it's just like the bridge. We're spending a lot of time and effort working on replacing the Hood River Bridge, and Commissioner Soder's spending a lot of time and effort working on this, and we are going to continue it. And anything that you guys come up with that can help us get past that goal line, we will definitely support as well.
So, excuse me, Commissioner, so in what sense is it not a county, county, especially since the Medicaid component, you have to be a Washington State resident? And so here we are, Clickatatt County.
So what I, what I mean by that is, is that, so the county itself, the county organization has the things that we're required to do. You know, we're required to have, you know, the jail and the police and these project programs. Those are like requirements by statute, we're required to do this. This is not something we're required to do by statute. It's something we can support, we're not going to own it, it's, you know, it's going to be owned by the housing authority. We can be advocates, we can be supporters of it, we can own the land, you know, we've put a lot of money into, you know, the property itself that's sitting there still empty, that we would love to see a building on. So that's where I'm going. I'm not saying we don't support it in any way, I'm just saying that we can't.
Yeah, I see the county is on a fundraising entity philanthropical person, absolutely. So I think from my perspective, I think the board, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'd be glad to meet with Joel in any forum that gets established, or whoever wants to do that. And the reason I wanted to come to this group was that we didn't want to overstep our bounds and do that. We wanted to certainly engage you all in this, because you've carried the ball so far. But yeah, I guess that's all I wanted to say. Yeah, glad, I'd be glad to meet with them and help walk through that structure.
I would just like to add the second part of my testimony, pointing out the other aspect, I mean, not that many people end up in assisted living, but we all end up, most of us end up in our homes, needing care. And so that's kind of the second ask here, is support for the county to, for increasing the, one of, one of the roadblocks apparently for care is the lack of certified home care people. And I don't know if that's the county purview either, but it's something that we're extremely concerned about.
One thing I'd add, and in the interest of time, I'll make it really brief. That's one, you know, as far as the, our goal is, at least my goal, is that we keep people in their homes. And that has been why the county was a big advocate of the home repair program, that is, and I think that is another one of those things that people don't even know it's there, that we have been successful in getting dollars. So if there are life safety issues or things, you know, improvements you have to have for your home, so that you can stay in your home, because that's where most people want to stay, and that's where we want most people to be. And if it's, you know, you need, you know, $10,000 or $20,000 to do some improvements, so that you can stay in there and fix the bathroom and, you know, put the roof, you know, we have programs for that, that we've been really successful. And we've had, in some ways, we've had a difficulty actually fully utilizing the grant dollars that we've received into that program. And so that's, that's something that we need to make sure we get the, and I believe we, I don't know if it's, City of Stevenson has agreed to be the grant coordinator, they're taking it, because it's in the two-county region. As far as we did it once, the City of Benjin did it once, because somebody has, it's state dollars, so it's got to flow through a government entity, and somebody has to host the grant. And so I think Stevenson agreed they would do it this time, so that's good. So we have, and I think we had unspent dollars in it the last couple of times, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
I'll be in touch.
And.
You volunteered now.
He is the go-to on this, so use him while you got him. He's only going to be around here another six months. All right. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, can I request a three-minute recess?
You may. And we'll have Comprehensive up next, if you guys feel like three minutes, and come on forward. Thank you, Sharon. Okay, we're going to reconvene, and we have an update from Comprehensive Health.
Hi, well, thanks for having us, and apologies for being late. We had some tire issues on the way here. We agreed to attend today to hopefully answer questions from the community. We know, I'm sure everybody's going through staffing challenges. We are slim pickings currently, so just came to hopefully answer some questions.
Well, I guess, can you start by giving us an overview of what you're currently providing in the county? How does your staffing look? You know, give us, give us where your guys are at in the county.
So my name's Ron Gingler, I'm the chief clinical officer here at Comprehensive Healthcare. And currently, we have, the array of services that we're able to provide is behavioral health, including mental health services and substance abuse services, typically ranging from early school-age kids through senior adults. At the highlight of the staffing that we had for the Clickatatt campus was, at that time, we had seven, what we called designated crisis responders. And of those seven, five of those would have been what we call a therapist slash DCR, which means that they fill the role of the crisis responder after hours or during the workday, and they're also in-office outpatient therapists. And then we had one supervisor who was an SUDB counselor, but also qualified to be a mental health professional in that pool, and then also a director who was also one of those DCRs. And then we had three separate substance abuse disorder counselors and two case managers. Currently, Comprehensive has one overall DCR in the Clickatatt County, and that is also our one therapist DCR. And we have a .8 therapist in training, so kind of really a paid internship for a clinician that we have. And then we have two SUDP or substance abuse disorder counselors in the campus, and that's split between the, our Goldendale office and our White Salmon office as well. We do not have a supervisor or director, and that's being managed by one of our vice presidents who travels up to the White Salmon office once a week and the Goldendale office once a week. So he's here twice a week during that time. We have had physicians open for well over three years. The challenge that we have is, is recruiting. It's a workforce challenge that we're experiencing, like most other healthcare entities. So those are the biggest challenges we have to meet the needs for the crisis calls that we have. We're utilizing our Walla Walla campus, and we're using a full-time team of DCRs, and so those designated crisis responders. And so with the law changing, allowing that crisis response can be done by telehealth, we're able to meet some of the needs. I mean, would we love to be in person? Absolutely, 100% we'd love to be in person, we just don't have the staffing available. With the help of Beacon, we've been able to hire additional positions to have like a full-time DCR, which we've never had in this county before. Unfortunately, that person has made a decision to change employment and move to another provider in the community, which is good, that she'll stay in the community. But that just reduces that number of overall DCRs to one.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I ask a follow-up? So you, so that I understand, so we have one person in county, and then, so we're utilizing telehealth to Walla Walla, DCRs in Walla Walla. So, how can I put this? Why is there availability of DCR capacity in Walla Walla?
I'm not saying there is.
Versus Clickatatt?
Right. It's about the location of where people are choosing to live. And right now, we're just not getting the applicants for that therapist DCR role. It's a, it's a challenging role.
So would you say it's that your staffing issues are more acute in Clickatatt County than they are in the rest of your service areas that Comprehensive serves?
Right, yeah, more acute, meaning.
There's less population to pull from.
Yeah. So if you were to put a 1 to 10 scale, and 10 is the most acute, Clickatatt would be a 10. Walla Walla is probably a 7. So I mean, we're not talking that Walla Walla has a plethora of.
They're just lounging around, looking for something to do. Okay. Thank you.
The one fortunate thing that we have is, the volume of crisis calls for Clickatatt County is, is not massive. However, so for example, we've had in May of '21 through May of '22, up until today, we had 201 total requests for services for a DCR. 125 of those were managed by the onsite DCR in the county, and 76 of those were managed by the Walla Walla campus. I apologize that we didn't able to split the data about in early May of '21 through May of '22. I know that that number has shifted, and the 76 is probably more towards the end of that timeframe instead of the beginning of that timeframe. The average response time for all of those calls is 30 minutes, and then the average response time for emergent calls is 32 minutes. The bulk of the calls are coming from Skyline Hospital. And the reason the bulk of the calls are coming from Skyline Hospital is we do get some carryover from Skamania County, from their crisis workers, because they do not have a hospital in order to be able to clear for medical necessity. And then the next highest referral source is Clickatatt Valley Hospital, and then the Clickatatt County Jail is the third. So the numbers sound okay, and there's going to be those anomalies in which it's not within the statutes of two hours. Fortunately, they're not a large number, it's probably single digits. However, we do have some pretty amazing numbers for a county like this with the, with the geographic scope of this county. The other, and I think that has a lot to do also with telehealth, because when we have a designated crisis responder in our Goldendale office, and there's a call from Skyline, we're able to telehealth into that and, and cut down the response time dramatically. Again, there's lots of kinks, and then if the system goes down, then, you know, we're at the mercy of technology, so. Those are some of the challenges. I think workforce in general, behavioral health is, is, I've been in the field for 34 years, and I have not seen this kind of a workforce dip and not see a rebound. Usually I see a rebound within, you know, a year, year and a half, but we've, we've seen this dip pre-COVID, and it just was exacerbated during COVID, or we're not out of COVID, so. That's kind of a high level of what services we're providing.
So when you only have one DCR in the county, are you able to keep your offices in Goldendale and White Salmon even open?
We have them open. There have been, I think, two occasions in the White Salmon area where we didn't, an office coordinator was out on an extended leave, and so we needed to route some calls and then ensure that we were moving staff around between the Goldendale office and White Salmon. I think it was two days a week that we ended up closing the White Salmon office. So it is a significant challenge.
The money that comes through the state gets funneled through Beacon and goes to you. Does that amount of money fluctuate, depending on how many employees you have, or the amount of service you are providing, or the response time to call? or the amount of service you are providing or the response time to calls? Or are you just getting a block dollar amount?
Mala Edie's talked to that. She's the contract master of time, space, and dimension.
And I'm Edie Devil, the Chief Operating Officer. There's pieces of things we have to meet, and I didn't look at the specific contract before I came, and they are different ASO to ASO. So Leah, I know you're sitting here, not to put you on the spot, but do you want to answer that off the top of your head?
Let's get her a mic, please.
Oh, sorry.
Or she can come forward or... We've got a lot of people on the Zoom, and their hands are already up. I'll make sure everybody can hear this.
Sure, thank you. I'm Leah Becknow with Beacon Health Options, and we contract with Comprehensive Healthcare in this county to provide crisis services per our contract with the healthcare authority and the Medicaid organizations. And so in the case, we have different contracts with each of our crisis providers in our counties. We serve with Comprehensive for the crisis services. It's a fixed amount per year paid on a monthly basis.
Can you let us know what that is?
I'm not sure what our requirements are for that, so I'd have to check and see what we're allowed to share. But it should be adequate to cover what Ron described as the full staffing of DCRs. What it doesn't cover would be outpatient services that they might be delivering outside of crisis. So our role is around the crisis services and not additional outpatient therapy and that sort of stuff.
So if I'm hearing this straight, are you saying that you're being, you're, you're giving them pretty much a block grant for their full management if they were fully staffed with seven DCRs?
Along that line, yes. That's pretty consistent with what we do with all of our providers as well.
You're backing on my question. So I guess my question is, is if you're paying them to be fully staffed, and they are, you're not requesting them to give back the money for the staff that's not being provided?
We do not, no.
What's the encouragement to get fully provided, to get fully staffed?
It's how the healthcare authority has set up contracts. Yeah, yeah. But it's consistent with how we fund crisis services across most of our...
So then I would have to, I would have to ask you guys then the question that's, that bottles my mind is that if you have seven positions that you're getting paid for, and you can't find anyone for a year and a half, have you looked into contracting with other behavioral health professionals that are in the local area to provide these services? Because I'm looking at the people in the audience who are flabbergasted right now with the fact that you guys are getting paid to provide a service that's not being provided in the county.
So are we trying to contract with people? Yes, we have, for example, for the psychiatry, we cannot find a full-time psychiatrist, and so we're using Locum's companies to meet that need. And so we have had applicants that have come, and the ones that we've had that we've offered positions for, some of those have turned us down because of the cost of living. They prefer to live in the White Salmon area, not in the Goldendale area, and the cost of living has been unattainable for them. We have certain job salaries that we have tried to vet across other behavioral health organizations to ensure that we're competitive.
That's, that actually brings up a good question. Have you guys, and you can feel free to tell me, this one's none of my business. Have you tried to vet what you're paying your mental health professionals compared to the hospitals?
We have. We've done full salary assessments. We, this full-time, we have not been vacant of all of the DCR positions. They've come and gone. And so with the limited resource of staff here in this region, we end up flipping staff back and forth with whoever's paying the highest at the moment.
Oh. But for the most part, you would say you're competitive?
We're not, I would say we're not a critical access hospital, so we don't get federal enhancement dollars like your critical access hospitals do. So we don't have that enhanced funding, so we're probably under what they are. But we are competitive and even pay higher in this area versus other regions for community behavioral health agencies.
If I could clarify one point around the fixed costs that we have is that how they staff is not something that we dictate to any of our providers. And so while they're delivering the services, there's costs that they're incurring from their Walla Walla staff or from their supervisor who's coming down two days a week, you know. And so we often see our providers, ideally, they'd have this set salary for seven people or whatever. But instead, they're cobbling together different ways to deliver the services that end up costing sometimes more. I mean, you're paying somebody, you know, overtime to pick up an extra shift, you know, that kind of thing. And so that's why we do the fixed costs. Most of our providers have said, especially through the COVID time, that's really alleviated their budget concerns, so they can focus on staffing and finding alternative ways to cover different shifts. And so they've specifically asked us to be as flexible as possible with our state funding in that way. I don't know if that's helpful to explain that. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the question I have for now. If I would give time to others, you know, questions, I might have more later.
Can you talk to me a little bit about, because one of the complaints we've heard as far as what the level of service is with your interactions with law enforcement and how that all kind of works? Can you, so this is your opportunity to kind of talk to me as far as how those interactions usually work. And I was kind of curious, your statistic, you had about your 30 minutes and 32 minutes. Is that the same where it's in that time period? And so what is, you know, it's over the average when it used to be better, when you had more folks. And what's a more accurate number for, I mean, I assume we're kind of in our worst case right now if we only have one DCR in county. So if you can...
Well, I'll let Ron talk to the law enforcement piece of it a little bit, and then welcome the law enforcement officers to speak up. But with regards to the timing, I wouldn't say the timing's worst-case scenario today because of the advancement of telehealth and being able to use telehealth. Where historically, where we were maybe pulling from physical bodies, we didn't, we weren't using telehealth. So somebody to get from Goldendale to White Salmon's an hour. So historically, it would have taken longer in person.
And are we, I mean, and I have no medical training in any of that. I just know as a, as a human, I mean, telehealth for anything is certainly better than no health. But in my experience, it is not, you know, it's not as good as in-person is always, you know. I want, if I'm in crisis, I want to actually talk to a human in person. It's going to be more effective, I would say. And so I do have a concern about the, that we have this reliance, which again is better than nothing, because we just, we don't have bodies that can do it. And so we are, it's like the agency, we're in crisis ourselves as far as being able to provide the services. We have to figure out some way to, we can't operate in crisis all the time. It won't work. But so if, yeah, so if you can just talk about how it typically works with law enforcement as far as what it, how that, how that is, that would be helpful to me.
Well, I mean, typically, the phone call comes into the crisis line, and from there, it's routed to one of the designated crisis responders to communicate with the law enforcement officer or meet them where they're, they're at with an individual. Majority of the time, if the designated crisis responder is out in the community, more than likely, it's going to the hospital because the law enforcement officer has, has brought somebody to the hospital. And so we're going to assess and evaluate whether or not they meet the criteria for detention, involuntary detention, and then they have to be medically cleared to go to an inpatient unit, either now evaluation and treatment facility or a psychiatric inpatient hospital. Not talking Western and Eastern level, but we're talking Fairfax kind of hospitals throughout the world or throughout Washington State anyway. And that's the typical way it's supposed to work all the time. There are times that I know it doesn't work that way. The comment that Edie made about our response time, our response time is significantly better than it was when we had all the DCRs because of face-to-face was required and telehealth was not even an option. I mean, that's the only outcome that came from the COVID pandemic is they said, okay, we're going to lift this requirement, that face-to-face. Originally, that when telehealth was allowed, it was only for adults. And if a youth or anybody under the age of 18 needed to be evaluated, that had to be face-to-face. That was changed within this last year because of COVID. Now, research, we don't have enough research to say how well-effective this is. The state pulling it and allowing this waiver, I think, they've heard enough from, from people like me is that the rural communities don't have the resources, and you keep putting on programs that are designed for the King Counties of the world. But the staffing is not available to do these glorious things that I believe everyone in Click-Attack County deserves just as much as people in King County. And so, you know, Leah was, was very humble in what Beacon was able to do. They, early on with some of the COVID money, they passed it directly through to us. It didn't, as far as I know, didn't take anything, and I'm going to believe that for the rest of my life. And it was sign-on bonuses for, for new staff to incentivize them. It was also retention bonuses for staff. And so for some of the therapist positions, there was, gosh, I wish I remembered, somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000 saying, "Thank you for staying with us." And so those are things that we're trying to collaborate with our, one of our payers in Beacon. But like Edie said, it would be important if the Chief Hepner or if any other law enforcement has any specific questions for us. We've had specific meetings with law enforcement. We had convened a meeting with ourselves, Goldendale Police Department, Vinge and White Salmon, and also Yakima County, excuse me, sorry, Click-Attack County Jail with Commander Harmon, nope, I don't know if that's her official title, but...
It is now.
And the two hospital CEOs join us as well. We've been in very close contact.
Okay, thank you. So you guys received money from Beacon to do recruitment back in 2021, correct? Additional funds?
We did.
Have, I mean, how much money did you spend trying to recruit in Click-Attack County? Was it at all successful? Can you tell us what you're getting out of these dollars?
I think some of it was successful limited. I mean, the bodies still aren't here. So, so I think we used some of it. We used quite a bit of it for retention. We did use some for sign-on, but we do have money left over that we're waiting and still hoping to use for recruitment if we can get applicants. There are not applicants coming in. It's very slim.
This brings up a worry for me. If you use some of that for retention and now you're down to one person, it didn't retain very well.
Down to one person, DCR. We have other positions.
I think as we hear that here in our cars as well, so...
So how many, how many overall employees do you have within Click-Attack?
We were counting on the way down here, not including the providers. I think we're around 10, 11. And not including that VP that's filling in or of course, the Walla Walla. Not, not counting anybody filling in.
So what's the plan? I mean, if you've got positions that have been open for three years, we're, we've faced with the same... We're living with this too. What's your plan going forward?
We did just recently do a salary bump across the agency. So with those salary surveys we did, we did do a salary bump, hoping to get some, some media attention on that. So we've got a new marketing gal that's looking to ramp up publicizing that. I do think it's, this community is still going to be more of a challenge. People aren't necessarily looking to move to Click-Attack. And so it's looking across the river, seeing who wants to commute.
Honey, it feels like everybody wants to live in White Salmon these days. Carmen's online, right?
I don't know if she is or not.
She might have had to step away. I saw her on earlier.
She was earlier, but she's off or something.
Before I have any more questions, I'd like to open it up for, for our staff. I mean, I see this as a two-way conversation. We don't want to come down and, you know, hard on you, saying you're not doing your job. Our people are being effective. But we also want you to hear from our community and our members of what this is affecting us as well as our employees, as well as our cohorts at the cities, our, you know, city police officers. I'd love to give them all a chance to, to help you understand what they're living through as well. If we can turn that mic on, if there's anybody, any of our, we'll start with the county staff. If there's any staff that wants to have a, any questions, I know everybody has questions. And you can just take it.
Perfect. I don't know if it'll...
Yeah, you just pull it out.
Okay.
Don't be scared.
Got to hold my notebook, right? So first off, we're the Battle of the Clackitad County Emergency Management 911 Dispatch. One thing I will say before I start on all the other side is we've had a good relationship with Comprehensive Mental Health in regards to our employees. We've had a number of instances where our dispatchers deal with certain situations that not necessarily require counseling, but we find it more fit to offer that service. And so in the past, we've had that service immediately offered when we called the office. That would be a couple of years ago since the last one. So I thank them for that and making that available. On the side of crisis calls, we, our job is to manage resources. And so we stress when we don't have any resources to provide, right? And Comprehensive Mental Health is one of them. And it also is one of them that frees up or delays our other resources, like our officers. When we have no response, then our officers are tied up longer. So some of the situations we've had are, interestingly, funny that you made a mistake by calling us Yakima County, because this is a constant issue when we call the crisis line. This first 30 seconds or so are education on Washington State counties and the fact that Click-Attack County is one of them. Once we get past that hurdle with wherever the call is received, then we start working on what we need, a DCR. Then we often have to explain that we need a DCR to contact the officer. Why we're calling from a 911 center, not a hospital. We've had times where the call is refused because they say, well, when the patient gets to the hospital, the hospital can call us. Meanwhile, we have an officer on the field trying to make a determination whether this person is in such a crisis he needs to go to the hospital or it does not amount to that level in what they need to do. So not being professionals themselves, we're there and we're stuck with holding other calls for service because we have the resources as well. Other issues are... We'll call. We're told that we're going to get a callback to let us know when the DCR is available, when they're going to be coming up. In the past, the DCRs were excellent at calling within minutes. We would call the crisis line. We knew that DCR was actually contacted because they would call within minutes, the dispatch center and say, hey, I'm so-and-so, I'm going to be in route, where's your officer? You know, get a little bit of what, what's expecting them. From what I can get in, in short time, the latest one was on 4/17. We waited for a callback. At about 8:20, we called crisis line. Never got a callback.
It was at 8:20 AM or PM?
6:20 PM.
6:20 PM.
On 4/17, yeah. I believe the officer ended up taking that individual to the hospital. And we assume at that point that the hospital made contact and things got taken care of. On 4/20/22, I was actually unseen as a volunteer. On 4/20/22, I was actually unseen as a volunteer. The dispatcher notified us that there was no one available there yet. They called Comprehensive Mental Health and they were told there's no one available. And so the officer, well, then the police officer ended up handling the situation, contacting family and getting resources for a person in crisis. And that was 4/20/22 at 16:40 hours.
And do you know, in the first part of your comments and then this last one, is it information they're getting from the crisis line or from Comprehensive?
I believe this one, they called the Comprehensive Office here in town because it was within office hours. So, and oftentimes, like I mentioned, there's been several times where we called the crisis line and they'll refuse the call, they'll refuse to call out a DCR and state that when the hospital calls, they'll take care of that.
And that's the crisis line, not Comprehensive?
Correct, which to us, it's one and the same. Whether you guys contract them or not, you know, we're calling for a DCR, whatever number's provided for you guys, that's for you guys to deal with. So in, as far as average times, I would assume the 30 to 35 minutes is the hospitals is our average response times in the country. County for an officer to respond is about 30 minutes drive time if they're nearby. So I don't see anybody driving from Wana Wana to a situation. And many of the areas don't have internet service, so I don't know how telehealth would work out that, right? So that's just a couple of things. And if, you know, it might be where maybe the process shifted along the way, the way that things should be handled from our dispatch center. You mentioned conversations were had with law enforcement partners or a separate agency. If the process changed along the way of not having staff, we don't know. We follow the same process that we have, call the crisis number, call the local offices. And that's basically what it is. And put it plainly, if we have two dispatchers, they almost fight as to who does get the call crisis help and deal with them. It's, it's an ugly situation just because we expect things not to happen. So yeah, if there's anything that we can do on our side to make the process better, you know, we would love to learn what needs to be done. Like I said, our job is to manage resources and freeing up our officers as fast as we can to go to the next call is one of the things we try. So we try and do whatever they need on the field, get them the help they need. And a lot of times now is the call comes in to us and then 911 call comes in from a person in crisis and it's oftentimes not going to crisis line. If we can connect them because we have no resources to send them or it doesn't amount to a level where they're gonna hurt themselves right now. And it's always a gamble, so.
So I'll leave a, I'll leave a card, contact information with you when I go and hopefully I'll grab yours. We don't employ the crisis line, so that's separate from us. We don't have a contract with them, that's managed totally separate.
So yeah, if there's someone else that we should be calling?
And we do work with them, so, and so does Beacon. So as we hear hiccups come, we'll dig in and try to figure out where the messaging or where the inaccurate information is coming from and try to sort it out.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Phil.
You test it, Lee? Speak in it and see if it's loud enough.
I heard it there for a second.
Test.
There we go. You might not even need to hold that one.
Hello? So I've worked and have several meetings with Ron, Edie, even Jody. We have, we have good discussions. They know my personal feelings about TV. I'm not a fan at all because you do not get to read the people like you do in person. Like that'd be like me handling a domestic violence case on TV. But that's my personal opinion and I totally get why. Because it's quicker. I think it works wonders in the jail. I think that's great.
Keep going. My mic issues, shutting itself off apparently.
I'm lucky because I started a program with Skyline.
Oh, do it again.
I'm lucky because I started a program with Skyline Health to where I work with one of their behavioral health specialists who actually ride with my officers. And usually twice, half-days during the week. I also have a person who writes, who is the DCR for Comprehensive, who rides with my officer at nighttime on the weekends. And I'm all about that program. I pushed hard for it and got it through. It works great. The nice thing about having the DCR is she, if need be, she's available to take the person into protective custody. Whereas through my program at Skyline Health, he's not a DCR. He cannot take, only Comprehensive can take people into detain them and take them into care. So what I try to, with that program, it's more about, it's more about being upstream, I want to say, and not catching the bodies as they fall out, as they come down the river. It's addressing the problem before the crisis occurs. And so, and I hope to gain another position with that in the near future. One thing that I have not heard discussed here today, which I'll let either Edie or Ron talk about, is the agreement, at about 10 times, nine out of 10 times, when they do go to the hospital or wherever, they're set, they're, they sign a, what do you guys call it? No harm agreement?
Safety plan?
Safety plan. I'll let them discuss a safety plan with you because, and I get it, sometimes there's not room in the hospitals or the places where you, where they go and everything. Because ultimately, the state needs to step up and do more for the community mental health. It's just nothing but getting worse. This, last year in my little small area, we've had three people shoot themselves in the head, another person hang themselves and another one suffocate themselves. Small town USA, that should not be happening, but it does and it's increasingly going up. So if you would explain that to them and then, unless you have questions for me, but.
No, other than to say thank you and, and we do agree in person is better. I mean, obviously we would prefer that as well.
Yeah, and one thing I wanted to point is, we're talking about time restraints and everything. I have one officer on at a time in White Salmon. And I'm not gonna, I hate dumping my mental health on the hospital. When possible, I like my officer to stay with them so they can keep peace. And, but there's times that they have to go through another call. And so, treat, pass, I've been there for six hours before. But, and that's a good thing about telehealth, even though I'm not a big fan, is it does get them there sooner. However, I have never experienced an intake with telehealth to where they're actually committed. That, and it probably happens, I just have never had that happen.
Yeah, it does happen.
So, so Chief, you said that the DCR, the one DCR we have in the county spends on the weekend, a shift. One night with you. And are you going out there to places that you know there's an issue or are they just riding around with you?
They're just there for routine calls.
That's her shift with us, that she's.
Right. But both, in both cases with the DCR who works for them and behavioral health specialist that works for them, I try to hit the places that I've been dealing with the person, like pull in, "Hey, Billy," I'm just making up a name, "how you been lately?" I want them to converse, just like I do. When I'm out driving around, I know who's coming up. Right now I have two in the city that are getting close to having to go make a visit. Time coffee, whatever, just to build a rapport with them for the time they are in crisis. So, and that's what I try to do with both Lacy and Christopher with Skyline.
Questions?
Well, continue.
In the meantime, go online. You can tell the light goes out, so I don't know if you have to push the button differently to.
Director Quinn?
Come up here and steal mine there.
I just, so I'm the director of public health. We don't provide mental health services. It's over the last six months, we're getting an increasing number of phone calls. People are calling my personal line and specifically saying, "We can't get through to mental health, we can't get an appointment with mental health, please help me, what services can you offer us?" Which is unfortunate, we don't offer those. And so really, if you could just talk to at least a little bit about access, how many days a week your offices are opened? One of the barriers we've had, we routinely walk staff, or not staff, my staff walks individuals to your office to get help. I think they've had a lot of concerns about, the intake paperwork is really challenging, being able to potentially print that off in our office, have it available online so that we can actually sit and help because that's something we can do to support the work that you all are doing.
And then another, in another instance, just as an anecdote before I'd ask about your access, we got involved in a scenario in which an officer called to talk to us about a scenario that was going on and was specifically told by the mental health counselor that the mental health counselor was not allowed to speak to any public health staff. So that's definitely a concern for us because we are, we should be partners in providing services for the county. And so maybe revisiting what our role looks like, I know we haven't had a lot of engagement. We have a perinatal mental health program that we stood up last year. My staff have reached out multiple times and asked for support through Comprehensive and have been unable to get people to even return their phone calls or emails. So looking at that, but really interested in just kind of some more, some access information, what days of the week you're open? What's the timeline between if I have a diagnosis to the time I can be seen? My understanding through what I hear from the community is that's quite intensive and what kind of initiatives you have to decrease that time from diagnosis to treatment?
So I'll also leave some contact information for you. It's likely that maybe some of your questions that are getting pushed here are not getting elevated up. The offices themselves are open Monday through Friday.
Both offices?
Both offices, we've had some limited times where, I guess we had White Salmon was closed. They do close sometimes during lunch when there's not staff to support it being open. We are not the only mental health provider in the area, so if you're talking about crisis, certainly we are in the county. We do support our clients for mental health or folks that want to come in for intake. We also have folks on staff to help support that intake process. Behavioral health is very different from physical health. You can't just go in and be seen for an ailment, one ailment, "I'm here for a stroke, so I want to be treated." In order for a payer to pay it, insurance company to pay, there are specific requirements that must be collected, which is an intake or an assessment, which is very cumbersome. So if they call ahead of time, we do have people, resources in our other areas, call centers, that will help and walk through the questions with them and fill it in for them. They don't have to sit there and do it themselves if they need that support. We don't have the packets online yet today. We have some challenges there, but we do have support to go over it on the phone with them.
And it's my staff's perception that that hasn't been happening in the past and they've been really frustrated and talked about their frustration with doing that handoff from our office to your office and making sure that that individual is being cared for.
So let me leave some contact information. I know we pull numbers frequently. I know it's happening in Clickatack where that support is happening. I can see which person is helping and can see where it's coming from. So I know we have Yakima staff that are supporting and walking through that packet with Clickatack clients, but if you're getting hiccups, you can get ahold of Major Apple.
I have a question. Are you guys a nonprofit or a for-profit company?
We're nonprofit.
Nonprofit, okay. Oh, it's like. Oh, she just sent a message. Jenna, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. I just typed you up a long email just because I gotta leave here very shortly. I just sent you guys a really long email about my feelings on my experiences with Comprehensive. Is this a good time to talk about that and ask questions?
Well, since you have to go, Jenna's with Skyline, correct?
Yes, I'm a physician assistant both in the emergency department and in the family medicine clinic, so I have experience with Comprehensive and Beacon in both settings. And I can speak to the fact that Skamania County is a huge challenge and the reason for that is that my understanding is that Beacon holds the contract for Clickatack County and another agency holds a contract for Skamania and Clark Counties, which is why there isn't cross-coverage between Skamania and Clickatack County and not specifically because there's not a hospital present in Skamania County. So I think that is an issue from an emergency provider standpoint that needs to find a resolution between the companies that provide mental health services because it's leaving patients in the dark. I don't know how many times I have discharged patients from Skamania County where they just fall through the cracks. I do understand that Skamania County Health Department has more staff than Comprehensive does, but they're not open on the weekends or after 5:00 PM. So that doesn't help me when I'm working, my emergency department shifts that night or on the weekends, or our patients for that matter. Lacy's an angel and if she leaves Comprehensive, we're gonna be in a whole world of trouble. But with respect to Comprehensive, I feel like having telehealth is not ideal for most of our mental health patients. When they come in in crisis or if they've overdosed, having somebody to speak to them in person is a much better option than trying to, trying to gather information and develop rapport over telehealth. I am physically in clinic right now, which is why I couldn't be in person at the Board of Commissioners meeting because I'm here in White Salmon at our clinic. But I think that that's been a huge challenge. Prior to COVID, when Comprehensive and had more staff, I feel like they burned out their providers. They had a huge, huge turnover because they were expecting their providers to have a full client panel and then be on call all night long and then have to come back the next day. I might be a little nuts because I have two different jobs in ER and family practice, but I never booked myself to work that way. And that's just not sustainable for long-term, especially when you're dealing with mental health. So it would be better if you guys would consider splitting those positions, maybe having the DCRs in then clinic work or rotating it, but having to have them do that simultaneously, burn out every single person I worked with prior to COVID. So those are just some of my experiences. I can't get patients into Comprehensive except for through telehealth from an outpatient standpoint. So we are trying to bridge people and I, I'm not a mental health prescriber, but I'm having to try and bridge people until they can get to see somebody where the, you guys are the only game in town when it comes to our Medicaid patients and most of the private people, our patients can't afford. So I think that's something that maybe you guys aren't aware of, or if you are, I'm just gonna tell you again because those are what we deal with and that's what I'm dealing with as a provider from a primary care standpoint and from an emergency medicine standpoint.
So thank, thank you Jenna for sharing your concerns. With regards to Skamania specifically, we are not contracted with payers, MCOs or Beacon for crisis in Skamania County.
Right.
From Skamania is in Clickatack and goes into crisis, we will support that crisis because it happened in Clickatack.
I understand that because the ambulance always brings Skamania County mental health crisis into Skyline. That's why we see them there. So what I'm saying is that there needs to be some type of a resolution or an agreement between your organization and whomever holds the contract for Skamania County for those DCRs to be able to cross the county lines. Because Underwood is like five miles from here and when I- Because Underwood is like five miles from here and when I have patients, I, I have some specific examples that I have specifically dealt with where I thought somebody was gonna die because they fell through the cracks and I could not get Skamania County sheriffs to help me because of the state laws that prohibit them from responding to some of these crises. So I hear what you're saying, that you guys don't hold the contract for Skamania, but that's something that needs a resolution sooner rather than later.
And that's something that'll have to go through county commissioners and state legislative because we don't have DCRs that currently can go into Skamania County.
Right, and vice versa. Skamania County DCRs can't come over here. So I'm happy to lobby at the state level. I've done that for other things before for those reasons, but that's something that is, is definitely an issue.
And we can work on some lobbying as well. With regards to staffing and full panels and being burnt out, you know, Ron and I are going through an exercise, actually comprehensive is, looking at the cost and what we're spending versus the clients. You know, with the hospitals ramping up their behavioral health and S U D. And, and if we can continue to support all programs and aspects here, we don't have that many unique clients in, in Click-It-Tat that we're seeing. So this model has worked to date. They're not burnt out with heavy panels. For your example, we can look at different creative ways. The differences are, we have to figure out how to still keep the doors open and pay the bills, if you will.
No, I understand that.
With regards to prescriber hours and availability, we have lots of provider-specific hours available. We look at this weekly. And there are provider-prescriber hours available every week. Now, they would be telehealth, so there is that.
It's about six to eight weeks out for patients to get into a prescriber because they can't get in to see a counselor or do an intake for that matter, whether it comes from an emergency department follow-up or a primary care follow-up. So I have to call four different people if I want to get ahold of a prescriber to even consult with somebody. It's definitely time-consuming and, and it's another, it's another barrier to care for our patients, especially our psychiatric patients.
Thank, thank you Jenna.
Thank you.
Chief Hantaker?
Yes, I'll take a moment. I have to leave here.
We can tell.
I concur a lot with Chief Heffner and I'm having similar problems. That everybody's low, low manned. I've got personnel issues, comprehensive obviously does. And tying up an officer is just part of the, you know, the animal that we're dealing with right now. And there's times that we have been told, you know, when we reached out for dispatch to call the, the crisis center, right? We're told no one's available. Well, if the officer's taken a person into custody, safe custody enough to the hospital because they think that they're in a danger to themselves or others, right? That officer's tied up with them until they're released over to comprehensive. But a lot of times, those people are not in a good mood and they're pretty volatile. So that ties that officer up to stay to protect the person in crisis, protect the hospital staff and the other patients that are there. One thing that KVH is trying to do, I don't know about Skyline, but they're trying to create a safe room that's gonna be home for that. Well, that's still not complete, but it's still going forward and I'm in contact with Jonathan up at the hospital to, for its progress. But we're, we're still playing that waiting game with it because it takes time. But it's, it's problematic. It is problematic. Because again, a lot of those times when we take these people into custody, they're not in a good mood and they're a danger to themselves and they're a danger to staff. And like Chief Heffner has, one person at a time, my department experienced that a lot. And if, you know, the safe room would be a God-sent blessing, you know, because if that officer did have to leave for an emergency, that's the only one on duty. That person's secure, not gonna hurt themselves and is not gonna be able to hurt staff or other patients, and they'll come back when they can. But until then, you know, we're struggling along with comprehensive mental health, then there's staffing issues. But when we're told no one's available, like what do we do? Our job is to get them to a safe location. That's the hospital. Hospital's not gonna, you know, do, be able to do very much other than give them examination. So, any questions for me?
Thank you, Chief. Courtney?
I'm Courtney Cook. I'm the interim chief probation officer for district court probation. Our concern, not only DCRs, telehealth, is that we had people who have been deemed not needing to be detained at the time. And it's just hard to, I understand that it's a really great service and I think it is for therapy potentially, but for DCRs. In my experience, I've had a couple instances where our only other option is to call law enforcement, then potentially it, you know, snowballs into a crime and then it's into the jail. So outside of the DCRs, my concern is I have a lot of clients that are court ordered to do mental health evaluations and comprehensive is one of, is the only BHA in our county. So is the backlog still about three months waitlist for intakes?
It, it depends on if it's a reassessment or a new assessment. If it's somebody that's been seen with us before. And again, kind of back to the primary care, you can't go in for like a strep screen or something simple and just be treated for that. The state and insurance companies require a full comprehensive workup for a new diagnosis. But if it's somebody that is established that we have an assessment on, we can do a reassessment, which can be shorter.
Okay.
What is it for a new intake?
I, I don't know specifically in Click-It-Tat.
Yeah, probably the, the six to eight weeks is, is probably pretty accurate.
Another issue that we, we are running into, or at least what our clients are sharing with us, is the screening process. I find with some of them, it's difficult enough to fill out the paperwork. And both offices in our county have been really great in sharing those packets with us so that we could eliminate a step by having, directing them. We could just give them the packet. And at times we've been helpful or had to help them through that packet. But calling through the screeners has been really difficult or they get nobody. And in some of our clientele, they're not, they're not as, in a place where they're deemed as needing to be detained, but they're not fully functioning and they don't, a lot of them don't have the support, like the family's support. And unfortunately, our office becomes that and has to like help them through it and we do a lot of the calls in office. But that seems to be a really big roadblock for us and our clients. So that I would just encourage to try to, if there's a way to improve that area, I would really appreciate it and I think our clients would too. And so that's, I think, at this point, all I really have. I, I appreciate all that you guys do, do. It's a thankless job. And I think everybody at this point knows that we need more therapists in the area. So whatever we can do collectively to get those services, we'd be greatly appreciated. One other option, one other thought is, is my understanding that comprehensive does not take private pay insurance. I've run into an issue with that too. I do get clients that do have jobs and have insurance to pay, but they cannot. It's a struggle for them to get a mental health evaluation in the area because there isn't.
We are limited who we're contracted with.
Okay.
We can, we can look at that and look and see who their specific payer is, but we have not contracted with everybody.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thanks, Courtney.
Do we still not have Carmen? I guess I'll, I'll use the example that came up a couple of weeks ago. And that was that we had someone in the jail in crisis and they said that if we took them up to the hospital, that somebody would be there to be there. And so we had two officers take this person up there and they sat around for over two hours when someone from comprehensive was supposed to show up and they never showed up. We're paying, you know, overtime for, you know, potentially two officers because we have to backfill in the jail. And there was no phone call, no show, and they ended up having to take the person back. I don't know how we fix that, but I know from my side, having to pay the bills on this side, that's, that's expensive. That's a lot of work. That's a lot of effort for comprehensive to not show up. And I don't know how we ensure that doesn't happen again, but I would like to find a way to ensure that that doesn't happen again.
Do you have specifics you can share with us?
I know all about it. Yeah, yeah, that was a clear error on our part and the staff. And we've had some candid conversations about our responsibility when that was arranged the night before to, to meet at the, at the hospital. And so the vice president has ensured Carmen that this is what you need to do. We're gonna ensure that it doesn't happen again, however, that Carmen has the vice president's direct phone number and that we're gonna need to do a much better job. I mean, one of the mantras that I have, if it's not good enough for my grandkids, I don't want to do it. And it hurts. It really hurts to hear that story. It hurts to hear what chiefs, both chiefs have had to say with Courtney in public health. And I wish I remembered everybody else's name, Jenna at Skyline and KVH, to see the, the response time or to see that in order to get into services, you've got a six to eight week. And, and I've been doing therapy for 20-plus years. It hurts to hear that and knowing that the, the services aren't available or timely. And, and I know enough about trauma therapy and I know enough about treating depression. Even if I do get you in and I can't see you at least once every two weeks, every three weeks at the most, we're struggling and that's where it's at. And, and that's happening in all of our campuses, not just the Click-It-Tat campus, the two Golden Dell and the White Salmon campuses. We have folks in the Pasco area where they're out once every five weeks before they can get in to see their therapist. And this is not an initial appointment. This is ongoing. And we're hearing that from, we're a part of something called Forefront contributors. So it's the four largest behavioral health organizations in the state of Washington. And they're also expressing to our CEO their struggles as well. It's not an excuse. It's just the reality and the situation that you're talking about, Commissioner, is that it, I'm embarrassed that it was a, one we didn't even call or didn't even pick up the phone to respond. And so I'll give you my cell phone number because that, I don't ever want to see that happen again.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Narimora and I'm the executive director of Washington Prosecution Programs and we have all of the homeless housing for the area. And I'm sure that you're aware that there's a lot of crossover between houselessness and behavioral health issues. And I just want to be really candid and start out by saying, I am very frustrated. We all sat here for over an hour waiting for this to start. Now imagine you're in a behavioral health crisis. Everyone in our community is always waiting on comprehensive and I just have to say that. And I, there was something that really caught my ear. He said that when you look at our county through the numbers, the numbers sound okay. Our people are not numbers. Our community is not numbers. They are our neighbors and they are suffering. And the people who come through my doors are the Medicaid population. And when we try to do warm handoffs towards comprehensive, our clients will flat-out refuse. They will say, no, I've had nothing but bad experiences with comprehensive. I'm not going back. So my question to you all is that even if you were fully staffed tomorrow, and you know, I know there's the housing prices, there's the staffing shortage. There are so many things going on, but something has to give because this is our community. This is our neighbors that are suffering. So my question to you is that even if you were fully staffed tomorrow and you had, everything was running perfectly, what are you going to do to gain back your reputation in this county and to get our clientele to trust you again? Thank you.
Thanks. Well, I think some of the things that we've started doing, once we've heard that, you know, there's community perceptions that need fixed, is we've started meeting with the police chiefs, law enforcement, Leslie, Rob, the hospitals, and trying to talk through and sort through what are the issues and how can we help? It is going to be a challenge until we get fully staffed. And when we're all competing for the same staff, trying to serve the same clients, it is going to be a challenge.
And to answer the question, what are we gonna do differently? To me, it's about, to regain trust, it's, it's consistency. I can talk all I want in this meeting about my grandkids and why it's a big deal that we provide the services and how embarrassed I am. But it's, it's all about put up or shut up and what we can deliver and what we can't deliver. And so for the sake of argument, if we're fully staffed, it's gonna be, are we delivering the services that we said we're gonna deliver? Are they meeting the, the needs of the community in the types of, of services that are needed? Do we have the therapists who are well-trained in evidence-based practices? And I can show you through data and outcome measures what we're, what we're delivering. I think that's the only way to regain trust.
It takes time. It takes a long time. Come forward.
My name is David Canel. I'm prosecuting attorney in Quik-Dev County. I deal with a lot of offices and departments that have a lot of contact with comprehensive. You know, I share a lot of the frustrations going on. First off, to, to fix any problem, it seems to be, there needs to be greater recognition of the depth of the program. We have management that seems unaware of some of the realities, that when they say it's a 30-minute response time and dispatch and law enforcement says, no, that's not so. When we say, when we hear it's a four to six-week intake for mental health, probation and health professional would say, no, that's not so. So there's, there's a lot of disconnect here, a lot of frustration. I know that, you know, that I handle all the juvenile cases, large portion of the felonies and so forth. The juvenile situation, juvenile part of myself largely given up on comprehensive, simply doesn't provide therapeutic resources for juveniles and children. You mentioned children several times. You are failing the children of Quik-Dev County. There's more and more of that, the indigent children. So there's, there's widespread frustrations. I know that one of the anecdotes I can share was that it was really the straw that broke the camel's back that led to the termination of our drug court program after Blake. And we have dwindling numbers, there's different factors. But when I have a counselor from comprehensive that comes to me asking for discretion, and I treat her at that point as a whistleblower, saying that she was directed by her supervisor, Kyle Cardwell, not to share information with probation, the court and the prosecutors as to the relapse of their clients because they did not want to be viewed on the team with law enforcement. That was contrary to the agreements that they entered into to provide those therapeutic sources for drug, drug court. And that led, it was the final straw that led to the termination of drug court. So I hope comprehensive's proud of that. A supervisor that left under mysterious circumstances, that was never expected. So there's a lot of frustrations across the board. There's a lot of anecdotes that you heard today and I think a lot of other people have. It's a failing organization that's failing with talent. And the fact that they're still, based on conversations I had last week, they're still receiving funds for providing the services for that drug court that was terminated eight months ago. That's frustrating. It's frustrating to hear and they're hearing block grants from the Beacon service, basically he's a passer from the state to comprehensive, which I was aware, because I've signed off for years, as to form on those agreements, that there's never been any negotiation to reduce those rates or expectation of refunds for services not provided. Where, who are, who are we subsidizing that? What can we do better with that money? So that's why we're here. That's, that's all I can say. Thanks.
No, I, I, can I speak to you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. I, I would have to agree with the statement you made, put up or shut up. I'm kind of a no BS guy and I'm pretty pissed off. I think the current state of affairs is totally unacceptable. And I would really expect to see some improvement very soon because if I have to sign off on any contract going forward, they can be my witness. I don't just sign off on shit. Clean up your house. That's about all I have to say.
Did I saw, did I see a hand from Sharon? Were you, were you in?
Well, I just wanted to comment. I mean, I've been 16 years with the county and there's, with comprehensive, there's been an issue, kind of what Leslie's talked about with Log App. We don't, I don't just work with seniors. I also, we do Medicaid. We don't, I don't just work with seniors, I also, we do Medicaid case management services for clients in Clickatatt County. So we have younger disabled clients also. And I'm just thankful that the hospitals in North Shore have their own behavioral health providers because there's been a lack of support or not just crisis, but just ongoing counseling services. And there hasn't been like a Medicare certified provider, you know, that, and a lot of times we have people that are young, Medicaid clients that have become disabled because of mental health diagnosis and then can't be seen at Comprehensive because they become Medicare eligible and they have no one to provide that service. So I feel like the fact that we have some more localized services with behavior has been a blessing for many of our clients and especially our seniors too, who primarily have Medicare. But in addition to that, there's, in terms of a couple of clients that we've, family members that have called, have expressed similar to what Chief Heffner talked about, of having people that went in, in a crisis, had, were a danger to themselves and or others and they actually had a response through telehealth and then were released. I had a number of family members indicate a significant amount of concern about that, saying that that family member still was not a risk to themselves or others and they felt like they were released because they couldn't find a placement for the person and so they took them off of the hold because they had nothing else to do. And that's been just within the last six months. There's been two instances of a report on two different family members and that was specifically in kind of the Goldendale area. And luckily, one of the individuals ended up going out of state and getting assistance elsewhere. But there just seems to be, and to be honest, you know, it's not really a recent issue with Comprehensive, at least based on my experiences. So I get there's staffing challenges, but there's an issue with the rapport and the kind of status of Comprehensive with the number of our clients that absolutely refuse to go to them. So I'm just thankful we do have more local providers available. But sadly, like KVH's, you know, they're to behavioral health, it's about three to six months to get in for counseling, based on some recent referrals we've had. And so I guess I had a question too, whether Beacon is, are they only able to contract with Comprehensive or can they look at more localized providers? Is there another model to look at? Because I do think there is that challenge of things coming from out of Yakima or out of Spokane or out of Vancouver into Clickatatt County because of the distance of travel and just really recognizing and understanding the community.
I think specifically for the outpatient side, it is just like any other provider system. People, businesses choose to contract with some payers, not with others. So that's the way that the outpatient side works. With crisis, it's typically one, I think it's always one provider in each county, but under an ASO.
At this point, Comprehensive is the only provider that's expressed interest in doing those crisis services in Clickatatt. So there's not a lot of choices.
I guess my question would be, is, it seems to me that the community is, and the hospitals and the organizations are coming together to hire their own behavioral health specialists. They're moving outside of what they considered their typical roles to hire these positions because Comprehensive sadly isn't getting it done by what we're hearing here. And it's not just a lack of employees, but it's the reputation. And once you lose a reputation, it takes a whole lifetime to earn it and two words, to lose it. And where do we go from here? Because for example, you know, we heard this morning that both of our hospitals are hiring therapists. So there are therapists in the area, they're just choosing not to work for Comprehensive that may have something to do with the reputation or the pay or something else. The question that we have is, is that we can have therapists on staff at the hospitals, but they're not DCRs, so they can't do the job that they could be doing if we could contract with them, if Beacon would allow it or however it needs to work. We've got a problem here, we've got a disconnect and we've got to find a way to get through it. And if they need to express interest to Beacon so that they can get in on it, but the fact that Beacon is paying Comprehensive to do a job that now our own communities are having to backfill and do ourselves, it's strictly and wholly inappropriate and unprofessional for the government to be spending money to divert dollars that the job isn't getting done when we're having to backfill that. And there has to be a way through, some way that we can show. Because if you can't provide the service and somebody else is willing to, well, that says a lot about your business model or about, you know, the professionals that are currently hired there, however it works. I usually am a little more circumspect about the way, things I say, but at some point, the rubber has to meet the road and you have to take ownership of the situation that you're hearing from every one of my departments, my elected officials, my community members, my hospitals, that the job is not getting done. And I hope that Beacon hears that very clearly, that we will take care of our community and we'll do it ourselves if we have to, but that's not what we want to do. Because you guys have the funding from the state, you have the funding coming down and we just need to get this fixed, one way or another. And I'm sorry that, you know, you guys have lost your reputation in the community, it's obvious. Coming back from that, I don't know how you do it when the individuals within the community who are your clients are just saying, I don't want to talk to them, it's a waste of my time, it's not going to happen. I mean, if it's going to take three months just to get, you know, in to see somebody, three months is a long time in the life of a human being. I don't know how you handle a situation like this. I think telehealth is great. Without telehealth, we would probably have absolutely nothing in the county without having access to Yakima. But the fact that, you know, we have qualified people in this community that can be doing a job, that could be a DCR, that are not, that are working for the hospitals rather than Comprehensive, that says that we need to fix this somehow. And that's why the first question I asked is, is that something you guys can contract out for? Can you contract out to the hospitals to do the job? Is that something that's allowable under the contracts? We've got to find something, but the fact that, you know, you're getting a block grant to provide services that you have one person providing is, I don't even know how to say it kindly, so I won't. But I do appreciate, and I thank you very much for taking responsibility for the mistakes that, you know, you owned up to that and that means a lot to me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Soder?
And I would, I'd like to say that, you know, I will apologize for the hostility you were facing here today, but the community is pretty hostile on the subject, so.
All right. And again, this isn't, even I feel hostile because this has been something that's been building for a very long time. We should have been having these meetings once a year or once a quarter to find ways to get it fixed and that is a failing on our part as well by not having you guys down more often. I hope you guys have a safe drive home. Please leave your cards, a stack of them, I'd be happy to get in touch with you. And thank you for your time. Thank you, much appreciated. Put your card safe. Yeah. You've got the good card.
Yeah, I'm sure you will, but hopefully reach out to all the speakers and make sure like emergency management has the correct procedures, correct phone numbers to call and all that kind of stuff and maybe we can clean some.
You can leave him at the desk, we don't want to...
That's fine. Yeah. Nothing for nothing, nothing? Do we, gentlemen?
They might not come back again after that. We might not get them back in the room.
Well, that was, I'm not, I'm still recording.
But prior to COVID, they used to come in once in a while. I think COVID has really...
Do you guys want to do the code compliance executive session?
Yep, he's ready, let's roll it.
All right.
This is going to be our last.
Do you guys have anything else?
And I don't think this will take that long.
I do want to thank everybody for being online for the mental health thing, that's important.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. We are going to enter into executive session in accordance with RCW 4230-110-1-G. So this is different. And for how long, gentlemen?
I only need five or 10 minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes. Eight, but I think...
Just real quick though, just to report that the appellants on the Under-Chemist did file an appeal, Division 3, we received notification of that yesterday. So just to let you know on that, so it'll be going on for another year or two. We'll talk next week in more detail.
Division 3, is that Court of Appeals?
Correct.
State Court of Appeals or...
Of course. Yes. And then I have some documents that we're finalizing, hopefully be to leave by Thursday at 10:00. Is that a shortcut off this week though or, okay, for the information regarding last week? Or any other questions for me or anything? And then I think it's just personnel matters, so we'll turn it over.
Thank you very much, sir, for what you had to say. You are always succinct.
Gentlemen and scholar.
Okay, four or five minutes to begin. I will start the timer. If, maybe go put it, lock the door.
We need to ask people to leave.
Oh, and thank you all for who was there. Oh, I forgot, I was going to let Vern, sorry Vern.
He put his hand down once we started going off a little bit. I did, sorry.
Five minutes to start.